Good evening. We will begin our October 2020, 2025 meeting with the annual fall tour with the Maryland Department of Transportation to hear about the consolidated transportation plan in Anarondo County. We will take a break before beginning our legislative session at 7:00 PM. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. And do we have any other elected officials who came out today to take a look? We do have County Executive Stuart Pittman, Delegate Heather Bagnall, and so thank you all for coming out to hear today. And we will now welcome Acting Secretary Samantha Biddle and other esteemed colleagues from the Maryland Department of Transportation for the annual CTP's tour. It's now yours.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. Hello, everyone. For the record, Samantha Biddle, Acting Secretary of the Maryland Department of Transportation. It was great being with some members of county government, including County Executive Pittman, earlier today where we highlighted a funding announcement for the I-97 Safety and Widening Project. Administrator Pines can cover a little bit more about that in his presentation. I do thank you for inviting us here this evening to provide an overview of our draft six-year consolidated transportation program, more commonly known as the CTP. As you mentioned, members of the MDOT team are here with me this evening, and each of us will give a brief overview of what is going on in our modes. But I do want to make sure that we keep our presentation concise so that we do have enough time to answer any questions you all may have or provide feed or opportunities for you to provide feedback to us on the priorities here in Anarondo County. Before diving into the details of the CTP, I do want to address the ongoing federal government shutdown and the impact it's having on Maryland families. Governor Moore is taking action to support and protect all Marylanders affected by the lapse in federal funding. Just this past Friday, the governor announced anyone with a federal ID can ride MTA's Mark train and commuter bus for free during the shutdown. Governor is also ensuring everyone is aware of protections for federal workers and vital federal programs, including Medicaid and SNAP, and making sure that these continue for as long as possible. Resources on unemployment insurance, housing, utilities, and loan programs can be found on the governor's website, governor.maryland.gov. As for transportation, we're seeing limited direct impact, which includes a decrease in transit ridership to and from the DC region. But for now, MDOT continues to operate as usual and will always work to protect Marylanders, our projects, and our investments. Turning now to the meeting we had with county representatives down at the MAKO conferences past summer, I do want to thank the time those took to spend with us. It is always a great opportunity to connect and understand how we can partner together to accomplish shared goals. At MAKO, we were asked about transit-oriented development around the Odenton Mark train station. So we are now in the final stages of selecting a joint development partner, and will be planning to coordinate with the county to make a public announcement soon. We are just so thankful for that partnership. Our teams are also working on getting a TOD designation for the Cromwell Light Rail Station and look forward to developing a TOD site strategy for the state-owned portion. Turning to the draft CTP, MDOT is utilizing every dollar and making strategic investments in the Moore-Miller Administration's transportation priorities. These priorities are further enhancing safety, maintaining our systems so that it is in working order, and driving economic growth across the state. The draft CTP is an exciting follow-up to a very productive legislative session this past year, and I want to thank our General Assembly partners. Through the governor's leadership and the support of the General Assembly, MDOT was able to secure roughly $400 million in additional transportation revenue every year. Without these additional dollars, MDOT is, with these additional dollars, MDOT is stretching the funding by combining and matching it with federal resources and financing options, turning the $400 million into an additional almost $700 million in annual transportation funding. Without these additional resources, MDOT would have seen sustained and deepened cuts in transportation, and thankfully, that is not necessary. Instead, I can share that the draft CTP includes investments in Anarondo County and all across Maryland. The balanced six-year capital budget is $21.5 billion, and this is a modest increase of nearly $300 million compared to last year's final CTP. The additional dollars are being used to take significant action to further maintain our system, keep it in working order, ensuring millions of Marylanders can get where they need to safely and reliably. A few highlights include moving forward with the safety capacity efforts along I-97, as I mentioned previously, engineering safety and accessibility improvements along Ritchie Highway from US 50 to Arnold Road, getting transit in the Baltimore region back on track with a nearly $1.4 billion investment to modernize our entire light rail system, which is 32 years old, advancing transit supportive developments in Cromwell and Odenton, enhancing the safety of those who walk, bike, and roll with two pedestrian safety action plan projects and a complete streets quick build project in the county, and of course, continuing work on the Chesapeake Bay Crossing Study. I do also want to highlight that the draft CTP keeps highway user revenue levels at the current funding level through fiscal year 2027. Before closing, just taking a note about safety, one of our top priorities, MDOT is serious about safety, and that's reflected in this draft CTP. We continue to push forward to expedite progress and sharply bend the curve on roadway fatalities across Maryland, and we are trying to lead the way to deliver bold policy changes and projects needed to improve the safety outcomes. And I encourage you and your teams to partner with us in these efforts. I'm now going to turn the presentation over to our MDOT team for brief local updates, and we'll start with the Maryland Transit Administration with Administrator Holly Arnold.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to be here in Anarondo County. For the record, my name is Holly Arnold, the Administrator at the Maryland Transit Administration. And the prioritization of transit in the Moore-Miller Administration's budget ensures a bright future for transit in Anarondo County. This year's draft CTP enables MTA to make needed investments across the system to preserve and strengthen the system. As the secretary mentioned, the draft CTP supports funding for the Light Rail Modernization Program, a $1.4 billion project to replace our current light rail fleet with modern vehicles and upgrade our stations, systems, and maintenance facilities throughout the entire alignment. This is the first significant investment in light rail system in more than 30 years, and we're moving quickly. We've already advertised multiple contracts. This draft CTP also dedicates resources for the design of enhancement projects along our MARK system, including our Pin Camden Connector. These projects will improve the system reliability and flexibility and position MARK for future expansion opportunities. As the secretary noted, we're serious about safety, and we continue to prioritize investments that support a safe, secure, and resilient transit network. We recently launched Rules of the Ride, a code of conduct that sets clear expectations about what is acceptable behavior when using our system. This effort will help to protect both our riders and our employees, especially our operators, and reinforce a commitment to a safe and comfortable ride for everyone. Effective October 1st, riders who violate the code's bannable offenses will face permanent or temporary suspension from the system. Lastly, MTA is proud to support Anarondo County's local transit operations with nearly $3.3 million to include funding for the rideshare program and four small buses. Thanks for your time, and I'm going to turn it over to Bruce at the Maryland Transportation Authority.
Thank you, Holly. For the record, Bruce Gartner from the Maryland Transportation Authority and the Executive Director. I'll just mic even farther. We appreciate the county's support as we continue making progress on rebuilding the Key Bridge. That team that we have working on that project has accomplished more in one year than most projects of this magnitude have in five years, and I just want to emphasize that point in the pace that we're going. We began mechanical demolition of the remaining bridge, undertook vital preconstruction work to inform design, and that has reached nearly 70% at this point, which is very important to us moving forward, that we get that far down the line. There's more work to come in this once-in-a-lifetime project that is obviously generating nationwide interest. Our test piling program began last month with clearing the path for construction to start at the end of this year, early next year. You might have seen some of our videos and social media on four piles of those large piles that have already been placed in the Patapsco River. We have two more that we're hoping to get in this week. Weather permitting, we have six more on the way up the East Coast on a barge. So as that moves forward and we advance bridge design, we will be updating the estimated project cost and schedule in the coming months. So our other big bridge project is obviously closer to home here in Anarondo County, and that is the Bay Bridge. We have several initiatives at the Bay Bridge on multiple fronts, everything from safety enhancements to rehabilitation, traffic management, communication, and obviously, planning for the future. So although the pier protection design and conditions meet the requirements of an existing bridge and federal permits, the MDTA has been engaged in the design and procurement process for enhanced physical protection of the existing bridge. Earlier today, we held a Bay Bridge Protection Industry Forum. We had about 120 folks from industry in the room with us near BWI Airport, and that is, we're hoping to advance the advertisement for that project to come out in the winter of '25 and '26. A recording of that forum will be posted on our website in the very near future, so if there's any interest in that, it will be out there on our website. In the coming months, the MDTA will publish the draft environmental impact statement and hold public hearings for our Chesapeake Bay Crossing Tier Two NEPA study. That will be completed in late 2026. At one point last year, we were hoping to be out with hearings for your constituents later this fall, but that'll likely be taking place early next year. That won't change the date at the end of 2026 for us. On the rehabilitation side, all the precast deck panels are in for Phase One of our eastbound deck replacement project, and we're doing concrete connection slabs for that phase currently. I'd also like to point out a recent communication improvement that we have entered into, and that's been with the assistance of both Anarondle County, the Department of Emergency Management at the state level, and Queen Anne's County. So it became clear last year when we were talking to folks that when we do, if we do have any closures of the Bay Bridge for an extended period of time, you may recall with the significant incident, or we had emergency repair last year, that motorists were left without a lot of information. So in working with those agencies, we've developed a text alert system that will go out to a geo-fenced area around the 50 corridor for any closure that would happen for three or more hours, that we anticipate would happen for three or more hours. So that's where we've agreed to start right now in using the Department of Emergency Management system, so we're thankful that partnership with the local governments and emergency professionals at the state level. So that concludes my remarks, and I'll hand it over to Will at State Highway Administration.
Well, good evening, and thank you, everyone. As was mentioned, I'm Will Pines, Maryland State Highway Administrator, and I want to echo the secretary's focus on safety. It's our top priority for all roadway users, and as an example, one of our quick build projects for 2025 was a complete streets project right here in Anarondo County on Maryland 261 in Rose Haven in the Harrington Harbor area. This summer, we installed lane separators and upgraded signage and crosswalks to improve safety here. Anarondo County also has received two pedestrian safety action plan projects in the works, and Ritchie Highway from Mountain Road to Maryland 648 in Glen Burnie. Design continues on this project through next fall, and Maryland 3 Business from I-97 to Maryland 100. We have a public meeting set for November 13th for this project to show concepts, and design will be complete next fall as well. We expect construction to begin on both of these projects in 2027. It was also great seeing state and county leaders earlier today, as was mentioned, as we highlighted the $113.8 million partnership project to improve mobility on I-97. This project will widen I-97 in each direction between Maryland 32 and US 50 to address critical congestion and keep motorists on the interstate and out of conflicts with vulnerable road users on other corridors like Maryland 2, Maryland 3, and other county routes. This portfolio of projects working in tandem on parallel corridors will save lives for all roadway users. These projects also wouldn't be possible without the county's contributions and partnership, and we want to thank you for your support. We're also advancing cost-share projects with the county, including Maryland 3 in Ralph Chapel area to provide a third lane, a shared-use path along Maryland 3 from Maryland 175 to Ralph Chapel Road, and crosswalk upgrades. Maryland 2 to add a third lane and sidewalk on the northbound side of Maryland 2 from US 50 to Arnold Road, and Maryland 214 widening from two lanes to four from Maryland 468 to Camp Letts Road, and adding a shared-use path and a roundabout at Lock Haven Road. These and others are part of the project task agreements with the county, and they will have funding that will appear in the final CTP for those executed project agreements. At the Maryland 2 and Byrdsville Road intersection, we're planning a full-color signal and hazard beacons. Construction will begin in the spring of 2026. Work also continues on the $82.3 million Maryland 175 and Baltimore/Washington Parkway Interchange Project, with a completion targeted for the fall of 2027. This year, we completed the Maryland 214 sidewalk project in Edgewater, and work is underway on the Maryland 173 project for sidewalks in the Rivera Beach area. We also resurfaced Maryland 100 from Maryland 170 to Maryland 3 Business and the Beltway Interloop from Maryland 648 to the Baltimore County Line. Finally, good news also, the county will receive nearly $400,000 in transportation alternatives grant for a safe routes-to-school coordinator, and a $240,000 Kim Lanfeer grant to close gaps between Waterworks Park and South Shore Trail. Kim Tran and I, our district engineer, are happy to answer questions at the end of this presentation, but now I'll turn it over to my colleague, Chrissy Neizer, at the Maryland Motor Vehicle Administration.
Thank you, Will. Good afternoon. It's great to see everybody. Chrissy Neizer, Motor Vehicle Administrator. And I'm proud to report that MBA's wait time continues to be five minutes a second year in a row, including at our Annapolis and Glen Burnie branch offices. This achievement is possible because of dedication and hard work of our employees. We do continue to encourage customers to sign up for your MyABA account. That unlocks 60 different transaction types that you can take advantage of at any time. But if you do visit one of our branch offices, you can take advantage of what we like to call our one-stop-shop approach to government services. At our Annapolis office, this includes our recently opened Department of Veterans and Military Families. We are proud to have the vice chair attend our grand opening along with Lieutenant Governor. It allows our veterans, our active-duty military members, as well as their families, easy access to benefits and other critical services. Earlier this year, we also celebrated the completion of the $12 million Glen Burnie Headquarters Branch renovation that included many safety projects, improving customer flow, as well as accessibility. Key upgrades include redesigned workstations, centralized customer-facing services, three new elevators, and expanded self-service kiosk area. As part of our ongoing outreach, we coordinated three visits in Anarondo County from Cruise, the traffic safety car, super cute, but with an important safety message. It's geared to children three to five with the idea of getting that safety message out there earlier, identifying staying safe in the car, first crossing streets, riding the bus, and safe places to play. Additionally, we conducted two older driver presentations, a car fit event, and three impaired-driving interactive educational events at local high schools in Anarondo County. We are committed to saving lives on our roadways. As the secretary said, at MDOT, we're serious about safety. Last year, 52 people lost their lives in Anarondo County. So far this year, there have been 21 fatalities. We're certainly glad to see that reduction, but we also know each one of those is a precious life that has been lost. We recently announced more than $12.9 million in highway safety grant funding to organizations and law enforcement to address distracted, impaired, and aggressive driving, as well as pedestrian and bicycle safety. Certainly like to commend Anarondo County in the safety area, adopting the local strategic safety plan is an important step forward. We are in the process of updating our state plan. That will be released in January, and then we'll certainly work with the local jurisdictions with any coordination efforts after that. So thank you for your time, and next I'll turn it over to the Maryland Aviation Administration.
Thank you very much. For the record, my name is Shanetta Griffin. I'm the Executive Director and CEO of the Maryland Aviation Administration. So happy to be here today in Anarondo County. Before I start, safety is number one for us as well, too, and I also want to thank the many federal employees that are working at our airport to keep our airport safe. The Maryland aviation system plays a crucial role in supporting travel, tourism, commerce, and jobs. BWI Thurgood Marshall Airport serves as a major aviation resource and an engine for economic development. With an economic impact of $11.3 billion, BWI Marshall generates and sustains more than 107,000 jobs throughout the region. Looking ahead, BWI Marshall's AB Connector and Baggage Handling System project, which is the largest improvement project in the airport's history, will be completed this fiscal year. Then we return much of our attention to capital projects to help modernize facilities, enhance safety and security, and improve the overall passenger experience. Throughout the state, our 33 public-use general aviation and scheduled commuter service airports create and support jobs while connecting residents and businesses to the global economy. The MAA statewide aviation grants program primarily advances safety projects related to runways, taxiways, and apron needs for public-use airports. MAA intends to administer $3 million in funding during fiscal year 2026 for regional airports across Maryland. Thank you for being here with, thank you for being here today, and I'd like to now turn it over to my colleague at the Maryland Port Administration.
For the record, my name is Robert Monroe. I am the Deputy Executive Director for Administration and Environment at the Maryland Port Administration. If you'll allow me a very, and I mean very brief, moment of personal indulgence, I have been a proud resident of Severna Park, Maryland since 1997. I've fully raised my family and participated in numerous variety of community events, so I'd just like to personally thank the members of this council, as well as the county executive, for your efforts in public service in preserving and improving the quality of life for people that live here. Really, it's been a great ride. Back to my Maryland Port Administration hat, the port of Baltimore remains strong. Our latest cargo volumes show a continued recovery following what would be an understatement to call a challenging year. All of our targeted commodities, including autos, containers, farm and construction machinery, paper, and brake bulk are over, are up over last year, and containers and autos, which are some of our most lucrative cargo, is actually up over 2023, which was prior to the collapse of the Key Bridge. We've not seen large impacts from the tariffs to date. However, we are continuing to monitor them due to the complexity of the supply chain, as well as the variety of approaches that are being implemented by our business stakeholders to address them. Our cruises continue to sail at full capacity, and we continue to talk to all cruise lines and encourage them to bring their ships to the port of Baltimore. On September 26, we celebrated the renovation of the Howard Street Tunnel for double-stack trains. While several bridges still need to be raised to finish this project, we anticipate that this will be done in the spring of 2026. The completion of the tunnel marks a major transformational point for the port of Baltimore in terms of our ability to handle additional cargo capacity. The double-stack project is scheduled, I said when it's scheduled to be completed, but it will increase business by about 160,000 containers annually and should create about 14,000 new jobs. We're excited also to be working on another transformational project, our $147 million EPA Clean Ports Grant. This grant has two distinct components. One of them is to deploy over 200 new zero-emission vehicles and equipments with some of our most important partners at the port of Baltimore, and the grant also includes a planning component under which MPA will update and expand our air emissions inventory, perform an alternative energy and workforce development analysis, and upgrade and develop a more comprehensive community engagement plan. With that, I will turn the conversation back to Acting Secretary Biddle.
Thank you so much, and we would just like to thank you again for the opportunity to present our six-year capital plan with you this evening. We'd be happy to take any questions or receive any feedback that you may have. Thank you again.
Before we take questions, I'm going to ask the county executive to come forward for his presentation, and then we will open it up. County Executive Pittman.
Thank you. You know, the first thing I want to say is that you all are very efficient, you talk fast, and you got that done in a few moments. And I was already going to say that watching your department, years and years and years, we have our priorities are probably almost identical to yours. Talk about safety, Vision Zero, we are on board, we adopted it, we are doing many things that we'll talk about briefly here. Connected, I mean, I always say, and I truly believe, that transportation is what connects people. You know that. It also connects our economy and creates opportunity for people, but also resilient. And you'll see throughout everything that we're doing that we really mean it when we say multimodal, and we see multimodal as a way to get these resilience. And so, great to be your partner. We're obviously very important to the state. We are the crossroads of Maryland. I think we've been called that in the past. We have BWI, Fort Meade, and the Capitol. So when we do well and improve things like Route 97 where we were, our legislators notice, don't they, Senator Vile? And we get support for those. So let's go to the next slide and talk about roads first. And you'll notice that Route 3 and Route 2 are both major north-south arteries, getting from north to south and south to north in Anarondo County. You sort of have to pick and choose. You'll look at ways, and you see whether the traffic jam is on 2, on 3, or on 97, and you jump to whichever one it is. So I was really glad, I was really glad to be there this morning at Route 97, talking about what's going to happen to basically solve the problem that I think they probably knew when they created it, that it was going to be a problem, and that eventually it would have to be fixed, going from three lanes to two, and then coming right off of Route 50 and the backups that you know are going to be there. So I'm excited that that project is moving, and it's going to be moving on a fast track with the design-build model, and that you funded it in the CTP, and we have funded it as well with about 10% of the cost, and we've found that that's what really works when we put money on the table, and then we get raised up in the priorities, and then move forward. So I was really glad to hear that you said that in the final, I believe the others. You will find out. I won't put you on the spot.
As long as they haven't executed.
Okay. Okay. Yes. I know we're doing 214, do we own 170? Executed agreement on 170?
I can tell you in a second. I'm sorry. I was listening. I wasn't ready to.
No problem, because I was told that my primary mission here was to get you to put this stuff in the CTP that's coming out in the final CTP. And it sounds like I could sit down now and don't need to say anything else, except I do have to talk about some other parts of transportation here. So thank you. Thank you for that. That is, you know, I see finishing what we started, kind of my last year in this job, or I'm about, it's about to be the last year, and that's what we keep saying, is we want to finish what we started. And these transportation projects, we're all, they, our participation in them really came out of the tax increase that we did, the one tenth of 1% on the income tax going straight into the permanent public improvements, and that's how we were able to invest in these. So transit, I think we brag a lot about the fact that we're one of the very few places in the country or the world that post-COVID, we've got our ridership back up way above what it was even before COVID. So we've actually increased ridership by about four times on our transit systems because they're now free, because we now have an app where everybody can figure out where they are. And so as a result, partly of that, I think you've increased our lots funding, which is, we thank you for that, and we have put in that money directly into expanding services, both our fixed route and micro-transit that we're doing. We started in South County, and now we're doing it in North County, and we're really excited about that. We know that we have to do a whole lot more. And then we also know that to make transit work, transit-oriented development is key, and you guys have been amazing partners as we've dealt with legislation on the Cromwell Station. We've now got our TOD resolution. This goes to you to get the TOD designation there, so we hope to see some amazing development that will increase ridership, and we're also really excited that your modernization program's moving forward, because having great trains makes people want to go on them and ride them, and very excited about the development that's going to be possible now at Odenton because of the parking garage that we're doing. So they have some housing in mixed use there, and we think that will increase ridership. The whole transit center is in our budget funded as a hub in our transit operations as well. So check back in a decade, and hopefully we'll have a whole lot more people riding transit, right? We'll also have some people riding the ferry in a decade, less than a decade. 28 fiscal year 2018, we expect to have this first ferry, it's not going to be that one. That's a really cool electric hydrofoil ferry from Sweden. That's the dream ferry. It goes really fast and it leaves no wake. But whatever ferry we do, it's going to be electric or hybrid, and we've got federal funding for that, and it will go from Annapolis across to Queen Anne's County, Meta Peak Park, where the old ferry used to go, and up to Baltimore City. And we think, I love talking about this to folks in Baltimore City that are trying to revitalize the harbor there, and talking to it about it with people in that world. So that is going to be not a car ferry, but a passenger ferry. And we would like your help creating a structure for a regional authority model so that we can participate jointly. And we hope that'll expand to be a multi-county across the Chesapeake Bay as the study we did. And we hope that'll expand to be a multi-county across the Chesapeake Bay as we did starting with just one ferry. All right. So we do not only go on water, and we do not only go in cars, and we do not only go in transit, but we go on trails, and we walk on them, and we bike on them, and we ride all kinds of scooters and things on them. And if you look at this map, this has been around for a long time. Our advocates, Spike Tukle, John Corin, are holding our feet to the fire, and I guess we're holding your feet to the fire so that we can get these done. You can see the ones that are, the ones in blue are already done, the ones that are in the dotted line are in process, and then the ones in the dotted gray lines are planned. And eventually, this will mean that we'll have a complete line that goes down in the parkway, up the whole county, not South County, sorry, but we'll get there eventually. So I think our residents are really excited about that. The Broadneck Trail almost done getting there, and so that would put a pin in it as a serious priority for multilateral. And then, I think when we do a bunch of town halls, we get more people talking about sidewalks probably than anything, especially when we're talking about sidewalks to schools and other places. And so, we come to you often if it's a state road, and we ask for support. Top priority, not only for, well, and I guess you're coming out with these things where the person that walks down, people that they have to use the crosswalk. That's great. We'll be happy to have those, but we actually need the crosswalks and the sidewalks to make that all. And then the big infrastructure, well, the bridges. So I mostly just want to thank you on the Key Bridge for the incredible work and speed with which it's going. The design-build model there is also, you know, part of the key to that. And despite what others might say, and nothing about what's going on in Maryland, outside Maryland, it is good to see how fast it's moving. I was out there with the governor and others, actually on the part of the bridge that is still there, and it's pretty extraordinary to see the work that they're doing already. And then the Chesapeake Bay Bridge, you know, we have our north-south problems, but we have our east-west problems. And it's, the Bay Bridge is the cause of our east-west problems. We're fine if we have the same number of lanes that they did, the bridge wasn't there. So getting the same number of lanes on the bridge and keeping that traffic moving is huge for the quarter. We know you're in Deepwater Face 2, and there are all these federal things that slow it all down, and that funding for it is going to be a big issue. We'll finally get through all of that, but we understand there's hearings coming, and we just, what we want to say, please continue, please keep us at the table. Our residents are ready to be at the table, show up at all the hearings, and it's a real quality of life issue here. And we know that the 97 improvements will help a lot because it gets backed up all the way. Yeah, I mean, those are our priorities. That's pretty much, it's the same story that we say every year, and the good news is that we're actually doing it. And so, thank you for talking to us. The other thing I want to say is we understand that General Assembly and the governor figured out how to actually work with each other and solve, not completely solve, but help with the major, major funding issues. And I know those were hard decisions for both, we have Delegate Bagel, we have Senator Vidal, we have Vittel, we don't have Bidel here, but that was a tongue-tie earlier today. It's an inside joke if you went to a press conference. Very difficult to say all those names, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, County Executive. And yes, Senator Pam Vidal joined us too. I want to recognize her. Thank you for coming. Pardon? Yes, we're about to open for questions right now. So, okay, and we are now going to open up for questions from colleagues, and Senator Vidal, you can as well. So anyone, please go ahead. Ms. Rodbien.
Thank you. I want to start by saying thank you to everyone here at the table. The work that you do is enormous and wonderful, and the vast majority of the things that you're presented today, I'm very pleased will be going forward. I have to, however, and this is very hard for me because I don't like to be confrontational, and I don't like to, you know, I like to be collaborative, but I'm very disappointed to learn that the I-97 project, which was originally a project just to improve the safety on the ramps from Route 50 to I-97, has turned into a widening that will add an additional lane in the northbound and southbound in one of the most environmentally sensitive areas of our county. If you know I-97, which I suspect most of you drive it at some point, you know that the entire length of I-97, where this project will take place, first of all, is in my district. And unfortunately, I really didn't know a lot about what was going on. I don't feel like, I feel like the communication on such a project could have been a lot better. But the whole project of widening I-97 is in District 6, in Anne Rundle County Council, District 6. And it was originally, like I said, just to be a ramp improvement, but it has become a widening project. And there, because of the environmentally sensitive land that it goes through, a lot of it is forested, there are parts of it that are, that include environmental easements. It close, it's very, it actually goes through Crownsville Memorial Park and very close to Bacon Ridge Natural Area. And all of, there are tons and tons of creeks in this area that all currently provide the important function of filtering and cleaning the water that ultimately ends up in the Chesapeake Bay. And so I'm deeply concerned about the amount of impervious surface that this will add in this area. I was lucky enough to go look at sustainability in Sweden last, about a year ago, and see the kinds of things that they, that Sweden is doing in terms of transportation that make a much, much smaller impact in terms of our carbon footprint. And in terms of traffic remediation, I know that there's a lot of, you guys are the experts, so I'm not going to pretend to be the expert, but I know that there is a lot of research out there that shows lane widening or adding lanes to highways usually, you know, remediates traffic and improves traffic for five years, 10 years at best, and then ultimately doesn't end up changing, making a real change in terms of impact on traffic in the long run. I really would love to figure out a way to use that. I mean, that's a significant amount of money, $113 million. I would love to see that money invested in more forward and future-thinking transportation projects. I know that you are working in those areas, but I, we are, we are in a climate crisis, and we, and I'm grateful for the work that you're doing, and I know that you're pushing forward faster and further than, you know, probably most of our, most of our sister states around the country. But I don't think that means we can't go even further in terms of pushing, you know, different kinds of transit. You know, there are lots of folks that would love to see the orange line coming out to Annapolis, or have a light rail come down I-97 instead of adding additional lanes. So I just want to put that out on the record. I'm a member of the Severn River Commission. The Severn River Commission has made the same, you know, has expressed, I believe they sent a letter to MDOT expressing their, you know, position that they also oppose this particular widening project, and for the same reasons. So I really just wanted to put that on the record and, you know, hope that there's, I'm grateful that at least there are, there are transit alternatives being built into the project, and so that gives me hope that there is something, you know, in the future that may be able to be used, you know, in terms of benefiting traffic and benefiting, you know, the environmental goals that I believe are part of our work in transportation. But I would love to see that investment, you know, sooner and really just kind of reprioritize, reprioritize in the way that really will have us moving forward more quickly. So thank you for, and again, I, like I said, that's very hard for me to do. I don't, I know you do amazing work. I know you work very hard, and so for me to, you know, be critical, but I also feel like this is a position that folks, the City of Annapolis is considering a resolution that would ask the state to drop this project as well. So the City of Annapolis Council. So I wanted that all to be on the record. And again, thank you for your work.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman, and, you know, I certainly can empathize with not wanting to be the one to speak out, but I think you're doing what you need to do and representing your constituency and appreciate, you know, the thoughtfulness of how you framed your concerns. I would see if Administrator Pines could speak a little bit to maybe just the evolution of the project and to your point of where we were initially considering the scope of work and where we are right now with how we're looking at the work. Pretty early on in the process to talk about the specifics of environmental mitigation, but, you know, the good news is that the State of Maryland does take environmental stewardship very seriously, both in terms of quantity and quality and how we treat stormwater, and I know that will remain paramount in everything and how we move forward. I would also just say that, you know, the I-97 corridor is one that we have viewed through the study phase over a number of years as one that needs to work in partnership with kind of all of the corridors that run in parallel. And so some of that also contributed to our thinking about the solution for 97 and how that could also benefit some of the other corridors that run in parallel, the challenges we've got on 2 and 3. We know that the needs of each corridor are a little different, the travelers are a little different, and the challenges are a little bit different on each of those as well. So our goal is to find a balance, and to your point on transit, that's absolutely something that we will be looking at integrating further as we get into things, as we have learned, integrating, you know, reliable transit, especially if you're looking at something that's on a commuter basis or more of a longer-term trip. We need to make sure that we have a reliable facility for Administrator Arnold, whoever the operating entity would be. I know connection between Baltimore and Annapolis was certainly something that came out as a recommendation in the most recent B-MAR bus plan. And so whatever we can do to provide reliability on the 97 corridor will ultimately benefit, you know, that transit service in the future. But Administrator Pines, I would turn it over to you. And then, Madam Chair, Administrator Pines does have some response points to the questions posed by County Executive Pittman on the other two projects from his presentation.
Well, thank you. Thank you again for the comments. We do appreciate the feedback and kind of as the secretary mentioned, some of the back history here. So the I-97 project, about two years ago, was switched in the CTP away from a transportation systems management and operations project, where originally the plan was to take the existing shoulders on I-97 and convert them into part-time shoulder-running, or what's sometimes called hard shoulder-running. That, we are doing that currently right now on the 695 Baltimore Beltway, where the inside shoulder median area will be utilized during peak hours to help mitigate traffic. We do use that. MDTA has some projects planned for hard shoulder-running. We have projects that are ongoing for that. That is a valid technique. When we looked at this area, the pavement for I-97 is not traffic-bearing for the types of regular loads that will be induced. And so when we did the analysis of the stormwater management to convert the shoulder and do that while managing traffic versus being able to widen and not impact traffic during construction, the costs were similar, the impacts were lessened during construction, and ultimately the benefit was bigger in terms of both mitigating traffic on I-97 proper, but also being able to mitigate issues on, again, Maryland 2 and 3. We've seen, like at the Chesapeake Bay Bridge, you probably are all familiar with discussions around red Xs and people not obeying those signals. That becomes an issue in hard shoulder-running, and when we looked at that, we looked at this area, the compliance issues that have been happening locally, the way that construction will be done, we didn't think it was a good fit for this area, and migrated towards that widening. That was included in the CTP and presented out there publicly. We've been updating our portal pages and newsletters and all the things, but we're happy to engage further with stakeholders on the project as well. As far as the County Executive's question on the PTA agreement, I think the project that you were asking about was Maryland 214? Is that right?
214.
Yep, 214. We did fully execute the PTA back in August. That did include construction funding, so that one's going to be good to go. And then 170 is an MOU project, and that one is, was executed back in May, and it also looks like we are good to go. Right? Yep.
The MOU is agreeing with us. We did it for the scope.
Thank you for the presentation and coming out this evening. It looks like you have a lot of folks from your agency here this evening. I'm going to touch on a few areas. I'll start with the NIPA study that you mentioned in reference to the Bay Bridge. 2026, 2027 is when the study will be complete, and I got a little confused on when the public will have an opportunity to speak on that.
Sorry, we'll be coming out with a draft statement that'll show our recommendations related to the line of the two bridges and the lanes available on those bridges. That'll be later this year with public hearings in early 2026, and the final record decision is still planned for the end of 2026. So public comment period based on our recommendations in that early 26 time period.
Okay. I will be eager to see that announcement and share it with my constituents. I have to thank you all for coming out to the Broadneck Council of Community meetings on a regular basis and sharing this project with multiple communities in District 5. I know that Bay Bridge backups impact other districts, but I don't think to the extent that the Broadneck Peninsula and even into Severna Park feels the backup from that traffic. So thank you very much for that. I think the video of the options that are available with the one goes down, one goes up, I know you are familiar with it, was fantastic. I'm really excited about this and look to partner with the state, and, you know, I'm willing to be a voice for everyone, and I'm sure our state partners feel the same way, when we ask the federal government to engage too, because this is really a critical corridor for the Broadneck Peninsula and District 5. With that, I would be remiss if I did not mention on behalf of the district that the pilot ramp closure project really needs to be tweaked again. One exit for a limited number of days is not working for the district. I know the studies say otherwise, but we did a whole lot better when we had two ramps closed. Even if you can only do it for a shorter period of time, knowing that there's a government employer in close proximity that also has to get staff out, really hope that we look at another alternative this summer.
We're happy to look at that. We've actually had some recent conversations with that employer, and there might be an opportunity to look at that. Some of the prior conversations were sort of adverse, both to the distance and how frequently we did that, but there seems to be potentially some easing there. So I think we can set up some time to talk about it further and see if we can expand that, both. We, the last several years, that operation was also very expensive, frankly, to run with the equipment. This past year, we actually installed gates at the ramp to permanently close it through those hours. That can work on this side, whereas on the eastern shore, because of the way the hours of operation are different and reopen on a daily basis to keep Route 8 available, it doesn't work there, or at least we're struggling to get it to work there. But I think if the concept could be extended in the same way, there might be some opportunities. So I'm happy to schedule a follow-up discussion on that.
I would love that, and I love that you all are still going back to the table and looking at it again. That tells me that you're really hearing constituents when you come out and visit them in the community. So thank you for that. Madam Chair, may I, I only have a few more. With regards to the widening of Route 2 northbound, I know you all are aware of concerns from the, or the residents that live back off of Chatuaga Road. It is a community that is accessible. If you're coming from Route 50, you can If you're coming from Route 50, you can access the community by making a right-hand turn right in the general area where the roads are going to be widened to three lanes. But if you are going southbound on Route 2, right now residents cross over the two existing lanes. So they have real concerns that now they're going to have to navigate a third lane to get across. So just putting that on your radar as you're reviewing the third lane addition, I'd be happy to have a lengthier conversation offline. And finally, Mr. Corns in the back. This is a topic that has come to my attention slowly over time. Kids don't ride standards, standard bikes and scooters as much as they used to. There's a thing called e-bikes and e-scooters that are becoming very popular with teenagers. I love seeing them use them, but I think that partners in state and local government have an opportunity to really educate not only the teenagers but parents on the rules of the road and how to safely be multimodal user with cars, especially some of the younger kids who just don't understand that the fact that you're going almost 20 miles an hour on the side of a road is really risky. So I would love to talk to you all further about education piece to get out there on the rules of the road and what the state deems certain classes of e-vehicles and where they are appropriate to be used.
You'll be happy to have follow-up conversations. Highway Safety Office has grant funding. We work with Bike Maryland. They're one of our grantees, but we're always looking for additional grantees to educate in this area. And I agree with you, especially those lessons at a young age really bear fruit as they continue to use our system, whether it's pedestrians, bicyclists, or drivers. So happy to partner.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
If I could just add to the, related to Maryland trails and the trail program that we work with at State Highway, DNR this past year did issue regulations around e-bike usage in the trail system. So just for your awareness.
Ms. Lloyd-Better.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have about a laryngitis, full disclosure, so I'm going to try and keep this brief. And I appreciate your patience, I hope I can be understood. I want to start with two thank yous, particularly to Ms. Bulwer and her team, working with residents down on Maryland 260 for some improvements. There's been a lot of engagement with that, the citizens, and I just wanted to say, this is a great opportunity to say thank you. I know it's made a difference, and I know they're looking forward to that work getting completed. Another thank you is for a crosswalk that was done across 424 from Pleasant Meadow Road. I can't tell you the number of citizens who have come up to me personally and just really expressed a high level of gratitude and relief. I've used that intersection, or rather that crosswalk personally. Also, it's fantastic. It's making a tangible difference in the quality of people's lives, which I think is a great testament to the importance of continuing to look at how we can get to what the county executive even spoke about, more crosswalks to continue to make our roads safer for our pedestrians. But thank you for the hard work in getting that in. And then a little bit of an ask. I know the county executive included it in his priority letter, which greatly appreciate, and I know the citizens down in Holland Point do. Sorry, my computer locked up on me. There we go. My understanding is that there is a feasibility study currently taking place for Route 261. And I know the citizens there are, the Holland Point Citizens Association are really excited, very highly anticipating getting those results. So just want to give a little urging, I think the sooner the better, so they can at least have an understanding of what's possible, what's not possible, so they can set expectations for how we can safely improve that road. So, and thank you, sir, for including that in your priority letter. That's it. Thank you.
Senator Bydl.
You may. We don't have a mic, or you can speak right here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So thank you all for being here. You really are doing a great job. And I saw you earlier today at the 97 announcement. And I understand about the environmental issues, but I will tell you, for those of us that spend hours on 97 trying to get to Annapolis, I'm looking forward to the improvements. My questions are very simple. I represent the district that is surrounded by transportation, the Maryland aviation with the airport, 295, 195. I think I have 10 light rail crossings, and so my little community of Lymphecum is just bombarded with transportation issues. So one of my questions is a very simple one for Ms. Arnold. How are we doing with that crossing on Maple Road?
So it's always more complicated than it seems. We had advertised and opened the bids for that with the goal of doing it next summer. And then unfortunately, the change from the federal administration and the DVE program came out. So we are working very closely with MDOT right now to understand how quickly we can move forward, because our goal is still to get it in the summer construction season for next year, but it got a little complicated. So as soon as I have an answer, I'll be happy to follow up with you directly.
It's been a long time.
I know, I know. For both of us, it's something we really would like to do. The timing of it in the summer is really important because we need to miss Anaronno County schools. We're also trying to coordinate with like traffic in the area. It involves an Anaronno County road plus a state highway, so there's a lot of kind of complicating factors there. So our goal is still to try for this coming summer.
My second question is also for you, is when will we see the new equipment for the 30-year-old light rail equipment, the issues with the gates coming down and staying down and all those issues?
So we have advertised for that project. It is a long kind of period that we're going to be seeing improvements over, but really starting in kind of 2027 through 2032 is when we'll be seeing improvements throughout the entire system.
Thank you. And Mr. Pines, you and I had a conversation today. Quality of life issues are so important to those of us that are like boots on the ground. So, and our chairwoman knows the trash on the ramps is a real issue for us in our community. So we see it particularly all the ramps that went and off 97. So can you tell us a little bit about what you're doing, not just the trash, but, but the growth of the weeds, just the, it's just not very attractive?
So thank you for the question, Senator. And litter is a huge challenge for us statewide. We have implemented that Operation Clean Sweep program to kind of go out and do some additional cleanups. The operating budget, thanks partly to the Maryland General Assembly and the governor's leadership to support the operating budget, still continues to fund and prioritize mowing litter. We do have to contract a lot of that work to keep up with it. Currently, the funding levels support four-to-six-week cycles, and following the most recent Operation Clean Sweep, we've been doing some photographic evidence, if you will, like how quickly are these areas reaccumulating litter? Statewide, we went out and cleaned everywhere. We got it to bare grass. We took pictures of it dirty immediately after and then came, and while we were cleaning it, just to like fully prove we were here and we did this work, and came back one week later and took photos, and you would not believe that it looks like we did zip. And so it's very difficult when we're funded to do four-to-six weeks and we're seeing the reaccumulation within a week's time. And I'm happy to share those pictures, the evidence, you know, it's there. So what are we doing beyond cleaning it? Because I frankly don't believe we're going to be able to have people standing outside of cars catching the litter on a daily basis. That's what we're talking about, the types of frequency that this litter is accumulating. We've revamped our adopt the highway program. It used to be done through paper forms. We've created a full GIS map so that folks can see which segments are available to adopt. There's an electronic process now to make it easier. It used to take upwards of a year to get signed up and sometimes more. Now we've greatly cut that down to a couple of months. You can get trained, all the safety training, and get up to speed quickly. We're also working with a couple of universities on concepts for how to utilize technology to collect video evidence packages of people in the act of littering. And I've been working with Maryland State Police and Prince George's County Police to try to implement a litter enforcement program based on video evidence. The challenge with that is that littering is in criminal law. And so the police, this isn't like your citation for a work zone camera, speed enforcement issue where somebody gets a ticket and mailed to them. This is, you've broken the law criminally, and we need to go knock on your door and do something about it. So there's obviously a lot of sensitivities around that, and we're working through those issues with the police. Don't, I do not have a timeframe on how soon we might be able to do a pilot program for that, but there's lots of social media we're pushing. Been working with Administrator Nizer to incorporate anti-litter messaging directly in the driver's manual. We're full court pressed to try to do everything we can, but it is a really big challenge that, frankly, I grew up watching Captain Planet and like don't know how we got here, like what happened to people that we littered so much, but...
People talk about all the ads we saw as children, and I understand about the litter, and it is a serious issue. I mean, I've wanted to go up and knock on windows before and say, pick that backpack up, but, you know, it's not a safe thing to do. But it's also about the weeds and the grass and the things that grow on those ramps. And, I mean, I can take you to Quarterfield Road, and we've shared complaints about that. New Cut Road, it just, when you travel south, the roads don't look like they do here. So maybe we need more funding. I'm happy to help with litter legislation if that's what you need, but I think we need to do more to make our roads just more beautiful. So thank you for your work. I know you haven't been in this position for very long, but I look forward to working with you. So thank all of you very much. I appreciate it. Our new director of the airport and I have conversations regularly because we share the airport and we have a lot of opposition. It's difficult to represent the airport. So, Ms. Griffin, thank you for your work and for being here today.
Thank you, Senator. I appreciate that.
Ms. Picker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Senator Bydl, for sharing our shared constituent concerns. I did want to ask, I'd be remiss if I didn't, Senator and I have been working on a crosswalk in the Glen Burnie Town Center. I think you mentioned something. We were talking very fast, sir. Where are we in that? It's been since 2019, the Glen Burnie Town Center, 648 crosswalk.
I'm going to phone a friend here and ask him to give me an update on that one. That one's planned for, she said, just to echo back what she said there, it's anticipated completion is summer 2026.
Summer 2026. So my legislative aide, who is actively listening in our office, Kristin, that's summer 2026. You heard it here.
And if I may, I do want to say that we really are taking crosswalks very seriously. In the last two years, we've completed almost 2,000 crosswalk upgrades statewide. So we're doing a lot of that. It does take time because we have so many that have been unmarked for so long, but we've done a full inventory. We know what we have, we know what we don't have, and we're really prioritizing getting them done.
Thank you, thank you. And I also wanted to, I had a lovely trip through BWI Airport, and I know that the airport brings many, many, many blessings to this part of Maryland. And I know landing at 8:40 and being home by 9:15 is fantastic. So, the airport and of course those bathrooms. So the bathrooms are great. They're so much better than...
Award-winning.
Award-winning. And I think BWI was, it's much easier to navigate than Atlanta-Hartsfield, so, and the bathrooms are better. But thank everybody. We have a lot of work to do. The litter is a huge, huge issue. I hear about it and have, from a handful of regular, frequent flyer constituents demanding that I personally get out and clean up the litter, which I've almost come out, almost gotten my weed whacker and my trash bag, but I have resisted because it's not really safe. But we do, we do need to figure out ways to make sure we're maintaining our roads and in that, it's a very quick visual for constituents to think that their tax dollars aren't being utilized well. But litter is obviously a behavior. It's not y'all's fault, so we have to change some behaviors. And I don't know the answer to that, but we have to change behaviors with how, I don't know if it, I don't, I can't believe how much litter is on those ramps. Like, is it coming out of trash trucks? Is it, are people really like throwing trash out of their window? Who does that? But people obviously are, so, but thank you. Thank you all of you for being here today.
So, thank you, Senator Bydl, for bringing up the litter and the things, it's a constant issue. In my district, we have that right on to 295, which is federal, and so who cleans up? Is it the state? Is it the county? Whatever. So we received a grant, and we have a group that is cleaning up those ramps. And in the past year, they cleaned just those ramps in that little section, over seven tons of litter coming out twice a month. So it shows that it's a continuous process, so we can call it out, but it really does have to be a changed behavior for people that they won't throw things out. Seven tons on just my little four exits right there. It's incredible. So, Ms. Robyn.
Thank you. I wanted to thank my colleagues for reminding me that I just wanted to raise an issue about crosswalks. I know it's, I believe it's already on the State Highway Administration's radar, that there is a crosswalk on West Street across from the Bush Library, and it actually is a signaled crosswalk. So a pedestrian can, you know, call for a signal and the traffic light turns red. People are still running through it anyway, and we've had some close calls. And so, you know, I don't, I actually don't know if this is something that the MDOT can, you know, help with or SHA can help with, but I think we've got an enforcement issue. And we have many of the, on that same stretch of West Street going out towards the mall. If you, you know, start, you know, in town, you know, sort of in Annapolis from Westgate Circle and go west on West Street towards the mall, there's a handful of crosswalks that are just regularly ignored. So anything to do to add to the safety of those crosswalks. You know, I know it's on folks' radars in our district office, and I appreciate the help, but I wanted to just elevate it to you since you're here. I also wanted to comment on, again, on the I-97. I've commuted on I-97 for most of the last 15 years, and during rush hour, the delays are usually no more than five or 10 minutes. And so again, I question 115, or $113 million for kind of normal rush hour traffic, is that really the best use of our, best use of our dollars? And I will let it go at that.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is what happens when we all start talking. We start triggering memories and thoughts for one another. I want to go back to what Councilwoman Pickard and Senator Bydl said, but more in relation to the signage. I have noticed and had some emails from constituents, just that the overgrowth is blocking a lot of the state highway signs. So happy to give you some actual points offline, but just wanted to note that I neglected to thank you all for your work on BNA and Little Joyce Lane that had some significant ponding issues and was causing repeated road closures. You all did a fantastic job of getting out there and responding and opening up the stormwater management issue. We do have an ongoing issue at Cypress Creek Road and Route 2 with significant ponding of water, and that is the location of two crosswalks. The crosswalk going over Route 2 from St. John's Church, which is also a private school, and a lot of kids cross over, and then they have to cross over again on Cypress. And when they have to cross Cypress because of the ponding, there's a, I mean, it's pretty deep. I went out there, I don't see any stormwater exit areas. So if there's not the underground infrastructure, is it possible to look at grading or directing the water just off of the road somehow, some way by using right-of-way and whatever you have at your disposal? That's all. I know you may not have the answer right now.
Take a look at it.
No, we're happy to take a look at that and also any of the signage locations. I think someone on the dais thanked Kelly and her team for their great work, but they do a great job of making sure that all of those constituent and elected official points of interest, you guys are often our eyes and ears out in the field, and so we really appreciate that and never feel like it's complaint, it's providing information so that we can do our best from, you know, a safety perspective. So really appreciate that.
So, and I want to thank again, as we talked about, our TOD areas. The Odenton Mark Station is in my district, and we are anxiously awaiting the parking garage to come in and hope that that will really spur a lot of things, a lot of positive economic development around that area. Really looking forward to that. I'm going to ask Mr. Coran, John Coran from Bike AAA, and I know he always has transportation, good transportation questions to ask, so we're going to give him that opportunity.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hummer. John Coran, Bike AAA. As you may know, I also chair the Interomno County Bicycle Advisory Commission. I'm a member of the County Transportation Commission, and I'm a gadfly at MB PAC and many other state forums. I want to start off with a thank you. I've said this the last couple of years, and I'll say it again even more so. The level of collaboration and transparency between the advocacy community and the MDOT agencies only continues to grow. We see it during the legislative session, we see it at PB, we see it at MB PAC, we saw it in the development... it in the development of the Maryland Trails Plan, and so it's, we see it in the Chesapeake Bay Bridge Bike Ped Lane that we hope we will see more about later this year, but the reception to our sign-on letter was great. So mostly, I'm here to thank you, but I will ask you to double down on three things. First, safety over capacity. Had a lot of discussion today about where we add capacity, where we add safety on Routes 2 and 3. Let's focus on safety and multimodal safety more so than capacity. When we add lane, we add speed, and when we add speed, we make it more treacherous for people traveling outside of vehicle. So in particular on 2 and 3, I'd like to see the focus on multimodal safety more so than lane addition, which adds capacity and ultimately adds traffic long-term, as has been mentioned. Next, mode shift. Intermodal County has unanimously adopted a general development plan and a strategic transportation plan that calls for quantified mode shift goals, county-wide and more aggressive goals in our town centers for all Glen Burnie and Odenton. We would love to see the state adopt mode shift goals. We know they're sort of aspirational, but we think it drives activity. And so we want your partnership in that. You saw on the Intermodal Trail Network map, which six or seven years ago, when we developed that map, there were loads of gaps. Every place we have a gap, there's an active project now, and a lot of them are SHA projects. Some of our toughest gaps, 713 between Arundel Mills and the airport, the 175-295 interchange, which includes a shared-use path, and the area from the southern terminus of the BNA Trail into Annapolis over the Naval Academy Bridge. We're very grateful SHA is sponsoring that multi-jurisdictional project that's got city, county, state, and even federal because of Naval Academy property in that project. So let's double down on that. And then the last one is project acceleration. We're doing pretty well on funding, but the pace at which it takes to complete projects, we were so happy to be at the WBNA Trail Bridge ribbon-cutting, but even the ribbon-cutting was late. Even that came four months after the bridge opened. We've got to find a way collectively to get the projects done quicker. Somehow we're able to do it when there's an imperative, as there is on the Key Bridge. How can we, how can we do better together to move projects from study to design into construction and to a ribbon-cutting quicker? On safety, we talked, Chrissy Neiser and I talked about this earlier, the numbers seem to be improving, but the percentage of fatalities for people traveling outside of a vehicle continues to be alarming. It's a disproportionate number of folks walking, biking, motorcycle, et cetera, that are being killed on our roadways. We feel your press on that. We are with you. We just need to all collectively keep that press on. I will leave it there. We look forward to seeing you down at the legislature. Happy to see our friend Matt Meikler out there. We want to get more bills passed that protect the vulnerable road users. There are a lot of speed and technology bills that we could together push through, the bicycle safety yield, more protection for vulnerable road users. So I look forward to continuing to work with all of you and most importantly, your teams. So thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here.
Madam Chair.
The tradition is alive.
No, thank you, Mr. Corin. And you mentioned, sorry, you mentioned all the areas where you're involved in partnership, and I just want to take a moment to personally thank you for dedicating your time last legislative session. You know, we talked a lot at the upfront about, you know, our ability to secure revenues, and I know you were very familiar face of many of our budget hearings last year, talking about the importance of, you know, all modes and safety. And so I just want to thank you for your role in, you know, in that coalition that secured the funding for the department as well.
Yeah, we're with you in that. Thanks, thanks all.
Are there any other questions from the council? So thank you all so much. We really appreciate this. It's a great update, and I feel sure that you are going to get follow-up questions from council members as we go on, but we appreciate all your work and thank you for coming out tonight. We will now take a break and reconvene at 7:00 PM for our legislative session. All right, so let's go ahead and get started. The October 20th, 2025 legislative session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silence. Ms. Pickard will lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
As we gather here in service to our community, let us take a moment to reflect on the responsibilities entrusted to us. May we approach our duties with wisdom, humility, and respect for all voices. May our deliberations be guided by a spirit of cooperation and a shared commitment to the public good. Let our decisions reflect fairness, compassion, and the hope for a better future for all residents of our county. We are grateful for the opportunity to serve, and may our efforts today help strengthen the fabric of our community. And for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're gonna begin tonight with a special presentation. There are some positions here in the county that are very public, like us, where you see us all the time, but the majority of people in the county who keep everything running and the vital operations going, we don't ever see. They're kind of our unsung heroes, and we only notice them when something goes wrong and they come out to fix it. But things like road maintenance and traffic and lights and trash pickup and water and sewer, the staff that maintains these operations are, as I said, unsung heroes, and I, but I know I'm grateful that I don't have to worry every day whether my shower is gonna come on or my toilet is going to flush or anything like that, because I know that these guys are taking care of everything.
And women.
And women. And so, but the crew we have today is all men. So that's why I say that. Recently, the excellence of these unsung heroes was on full display when the Anarundel County Department of Public Works Bureau of Utility Operations Team, the Rowdy Rotifers, recently won first place in Division 3 for the 38th Annual Operations Challenge Competition at the Water Environment Federation's Technical Exhibition and Conference. This is the international championship. This is the Super Bowl of operations, and these guys came in first place. This event pitted teams of top-tier wastewater operations professionals from across the United States. And so I think this just shows the rest of the country, what we already know, is that we have the most highly skilled and best professionals in the business. So I want to say congratulations to the Rowdy Rotifers, and thank you for always providing outstanding service to the residents of Anarundel County. And they are all here tonight. We're gonna present them with citations. I'm gonna call you guys, come on up. David Kramer, Mike Smith Jr., Andrew Duarchis, Alex Boyce, and Zachary Tate. Come on down, Rotifers. Are they real? All right. So help me out. I don't have the right to find them. I don't know. I don't know. Yes. Do you all mind? Yes, okay. On three. One, two, three. Okay, okay, turn around. Come on, Alex. Alex, we can't see you. There we go. All right. One, two, three. And I am. So that's all good. Not that the rest isn't important, but that is the great things, just when we can celebrate our people. So thank you, guys. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, that we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please understand that individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to the audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received 23 pieces, which were shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. Kathleen Kirchner, Marcia Althoff, Greg Althoff, David Kennedy, Kyle Nemhard, and Paul Higgins. I think we have one more seat, and Michael Althoff. We have everyone. All right. You can go ahead, Mr. Higgins.
Madam Chair, for the record, my name's Paul Higgins. My father taught me, if you make a mistake, step up and own it. And so tonight, I'm here to acknowledge the way I extended, exited the chambers in the last meeting was inappropriate and might have showed some disrespect for this council. There was no intent to disrespect the council. I really feel like by 10:45 that night, we had lost touch with the unique innovation, invocation you gave that night in this round of mine. And we were justifying votes. I felt like I was in a campaign, and I felt like we were disrespecting the people that had been here. And maybe my bucket got a little full and I let you, I let you know as I was leaving. So I will say, I'm here. Everything I said, I stand 100% behind. The manner in which I presented it is wrong, and I hope when others in this room make an error, they're able to step up to this table and state so. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. I appreciate that. Mr. Nemhard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colin Nemhard, Glen Burnie, Maryland. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the county council. I was prepared to move on from Bill 7225 after my recent testimony until I came across last week's article by Bethesda Today published on October 15th, exactly one month after the vote on Bill 7225. The Montgomery County Council voted unanimously on legislation that would actually ban workforce housing on land that does not directly abut public or private roads, otherwise known as flag lots. To quote the article, "The decision to exclude flag and thrulots from the new development rules for workforce housing came in response to constituents concerned that the zoning change would impact the character of their neighborhoods." We weren't asking to ban workforce housing. We just wanted consideration be given between transportation and density. You saw at the hearing regarding Nixon property that it's, the Nixon property in question is surrounded by a racially, culturally diverse and working-class neighborhood with rich history. Why is the county pushing for exclusions to zoning requirements here? I sincerely hope that these waivers are being applied equitably across the county. I'm a little bit skeptical that these waivers would be applied to areas like Pasadena, Millersville, or Severna Park, just to name a few. So to be realistic, we are aware that most county residents and homeowners are unfamiliar with the implications of certain zoning decisions made by the county. Therefore, we are committed to educating homeowners within the county about certain implications to these waivers such as overcrowded schools, increased traffic, and higher densities. As I've said before, two minutes is hardly enough to cover everything regarding this issue, but I'm happy to provide additional context if we're willing to have an open dialogue and have a discussion. Otherwise, I look forward to seeing you all at future county council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name's David Kennedy. I live at 3101 Ulster Court in Annapolis, but I'm also the manager of Government Affairs for Boat US, Boat Owners Association of the United States. We have over 740,000 members nationwide, 28,000 of those here in Maryland. And I'm here to talk about the Discovery Village Boat Ramp. There are over 160,000 registered boats in Maryland, making water access a critical issue, and that's why the Discovery Village Ramp is so important to our members. The ramp serves everyday families who cannot afford to have access to marinas, private boat ramps, private community ramps, and this is one of the few county public ramps, and the loss of this location would have been particularly impactful for the South County residents. The ramp was built using funds from the Sport Fish Restoration and Boating Trust Fund, a federal fund that captures the motorboat fuel tax, tax on fishing equipment, and brings it back into access and boating safety program. This is a federal program that I work on personally to make sure continues to run. So the crucial term here is trust. In this case, the boaters and anglers were trusting the county was gonna use those funds to be used for the purposes they said they would be. So when the ramp was built, the county signed a lease that said they would keep it open for 30 years. This is a standard piece, whenever you use trust fund money, is to have a provision like that. Now, some called the lease a bad deal. However, the decision to close the ramp was an even bigger mistake, if the first was at all. The county would need to repay the grant, and residents would be without meaningful access to the water. This ramp offers a caliber of facility that cannot be replaced. Waterfront property is limited. Once it is lost, it is gone. This is a generational opportunity to ensure public access to the bay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Yes, sir.
My name's Gregory Althoff. I'm here because we've lost access to our house and my son's house, which Michael couldn't be here tonight because the road was blocked and he couldn't come. There was no access. We went to the state, the state agreed with us, and lowered our property tax to $100,000 because they feel Intermodal County should have not closed our legal access. And he also told us to come speak and ask Nathan if he's done anything since last time we were here.
This isn't a question-and-answer time to have that, so it's just testimony at this time.
All right. So I'm just asking why I should not be able to drive home. Y'all heard us last time we were here, and nothing has happened. Nothing. Absolutely nothing. And my son couldn't even come here tonight because the neighbor decided he was gonna work on his garden at nine o'clock, or at 7:00 at night when we went to leave, and he could not get out of his property again. So here we are again, asking for somebody from the county- So, here we are again, asking for somebody from the county to give us our road back that was set in stone, that they made us use that road to build a brand-new home. Now, the state feels bad for us. The judge told us that to just keep coming in and keep saying stuff and keep bringing it up, because obviously, nobody in the county cares, that we can't get out of a driveway, that we just built a house. So, the best thing the state could do is lower the property tax to $100,000, which makes no sense. Everybody here goes home every day. There's no gate at Nathan's driveway when he comes home. Nathan's been to the property. He's seen that there's a road there. He's seen that there's cable boxes down the road. He's seen the utilities went down the road. He's seen there's gravel on the road. Agreed? But yet, nobody does anything about it. All I ask is if Nathan can get Wreckin' Parks, roads and right-ofways. I mean, just get departments together. Somebody make a decision. Why do we keep getting threatened?
This is going on four years.
I have, now I have, I have trespassing charges against me on both directions of a brand-new home that the county let us build.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. You can speak now.
My name is Marcia Althoff. Here with my husband and my son, again, who couldn't make it. We have a brand-new house in Pasadena, Maryland. We followed all the rules. We did everything that inspections and permits told us to do. We got the roads surveyed. We turned in our plaits. We turned in our grading plans. One month after we get the occupancy permit, Anaronda County puts up two locked gates and blocks our access. We never know when we're going to get home. We never know if the, Anaronda County owns at both ends. It is a private road in Pasadena. The neighbor down at one end blocked us when we started building. He was court-ordered to take that gate down. Soon as we get the occupancy permit, Anaronda County puts up locked gates and blocks our access. They told us they were going to give us a key to the gate. That has yet to happen. We've talked to the director of Wreckin' Parks. Nobody is returning our calls. The law office won't answer us. We've had to hire a private lawyer. This is emotionally draining on me. I cannot take it anymore. It's, I don't make that kind of money to pay for an attorney to pay for something that was, I was told, was our deeded access. Our cable went out in the winter. We had to wait 10 days for Anaronda County to come out and unlock the gate for Comcast. Everybody works from home, right? You all have internet. You all have cable. I had to wait 10 days. Something's got to change. Somebody needs to step up and help us out. This, this is, this is uncalled for in this day, day of age. It's emotionally draining. It really is. Imagine going to work, having to deal with this, how you're going to pay your bills, how you're going to pay an attorney. I can't turn back now. What else am I supposed to do? I'm asking for help. Somebody needs to help us out. We have a brand-new house that we have no access to.
Thank you, Ms. Althoff. I think we've all, we've all heard you. See what, what can be done. So, thank you all. If there's anyone else here who wishes to speak, please come up to the table and state your name, address, and topic before making your remarks. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. And again, this is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Yes, ma'am. You can go ahead.
Chair, my name is Kendra Smith. I'm from Churchton, Maryland. Good evening, council members. I am president of Muddy Creek Artists Guild, a group of 80 artists in South, in Southern Anaronda County. I'm here representing those artists who are facing a crisis. Rising commercial real estate costs and a shortage of spaces large enough to host studios and art shows means many of us may soon no longer be able to exhibit our work or teach classes. We won't be leaving South County because we live there and our hearts are there, but we're in danger of losing the ability to contribute publicly there. As artists, we contribute far more than paintings and performances. Our events support the local economy and reflect, as well as shape, the cultural identity of our communities. Look around you in Annapolis and try to imagine how much of the identity would be lost without the presence of art here. In Southern Anaronda County, we are struggling to maintain this presence. Right now, we have an opportunity. Discovery Village is currently for sale, a property that could serve as a permanent multi-use community facility. This isn't just about artists, though. It's about creating a large and accessible space for exhibitions, classes, nonprofit organizations, and community gatherings in South County. A multi-use facility is a strategic investment that serves multiple needs while strengthening existing community bonds. I'm asking you to seriously consider purchasing Discovery Village for this purpose. This is a concrete solution that addresses multiple community needs while ensuring that arts and culture remain accessible to everyone in our county, not just those above South River. The artists in this room and those I represent as Guild President want to continue serving our community. We want to keep exhibiting our work, teaching art to your children and families, and contributing to what makes Anaronda County special, but we need affordable and accessible space to make that possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. No, no clapping, please. Remember, it's a business meeting. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Laura Moran Collins. I've been here before. I am here to second most of what Kendra had to say. Well done, Kendra. I also represent the Arts Lab that is in South Anaronda County, near Deal. It is a house that has been reconfigured to allow for studio space and for ceramic studios and teaching to happen, but we have already outgrown it in less than seven years. So, that community represents easily another 80 or 90 artists. I wanted to make you aware that the art community down in Southern Anaronda County is actually vibrant, growing, and very vigorous community. It would be wonderful if you could support us in providing a community center that would house art exhibits and studio space and teaching there. I want to show you, we have two of my, two of our artists are here today, and we have the tip of the iceberg. There's probably 300 artists in that area. It's a significant part of your Southern Anaronda County. I'd like you to take care of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, council members. My name is Gene Brennan. I'm an attorney appearing behalf of the Woodhome Community on the issue of a traffic signal that has been, oh, gosh, it's, it's been around for quite a while. This is my first appearance on that, and I'm still kind of just getting involved in that. I have met with county officials with public works and, and permits once before, but the main point of this is that within the past week to 10 days, there has been, at a time when the Woodhome Community residents thought that there was a hold on any activity pending further study, there has been construction on the site on what has been referred to as a temporary light. Our concern is, is it really temporary? I mean, concrete was being poured, considerable activity was occurring on site, and the Woodhome people had not been made aware that this was going to occur. They thought that any activity on a temporary light was shelved pending further scrutiny. We're, we're asking that there be more transparency, more communication on the part of the county to these people. When this sort of thing happens, it kind of engenders suspicion and fear that you're being circumvented, you're being manipulated, and some of the residents had that feeling. We're simply asking for, for greater communication on part of the county. We did just receive considerable documents by way of a Public Information Act request from the county within the past week. We want to have our own traffic engineer review these matters and see what his input would be. So, once again, I just ask that, please, and I know that, that these people aren't here at this point, but we just ask that there be better and clearer communication to avoid this kind of future confusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder to everyone, please give your address when you speak. Ms. Collins, could you just give your address?
Sure, 5527 Glotchester Street in Churchton.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, council members and Madam Chair. I'm Lucy Davis of Severna Park, and I am here on behalf of the Youth Advisory Council, and we want to express our strong support of Bill 8125.
I'm going to stop you right there because that's on the agenda, so we're going to save you to speak when that comes up on the agenda, because this, a public invitation is just for things that aren't on the agenda. So, we'll call you when that bill comes up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm David Dickerson. I live at 3446 Merrimack Road in Davidsonville, and I'm here to talk about Discovery Village. And I want to thank the members of the council who were good to their word of sticking to, trying to find a resolution to, the decision to close that, close the lease off. I'm very glad to see that the lease has been resumed for a couple of years. I think of this as catching the ball just before it hit the ground. I would encourage you with great passion to think about the next two or three generations from now who are going to look back and say, wow, we had waterfront property in South County, one of three boat ramps the county had, and this council, this government allowed it to go away. Please don't let that be your legacy. Let it be your legacy that you say, we got a two-year reprieve to really work hard, find a way to retain operation of that boat ramp for the public and for the children's children who need this, as much as I need this, as much as the, the generation between me and them would need it. So, you know, try to make this a legacy of success that you've started. It's incredibly important that we fix what has occurred in a permanent way and find a solution that may take a government, a, you know, state government involvement. You, I think, have a, a lot of opportunities for partnerships because everyone realizes, and I'm sure you all do now if you didn't before, just how rare and precious this waterfront resource is for people who love to go boating. And certainly, there's other uses for that property, but just bottom line, how are you going to get your boat in the water as the years go by? How are you going to turn to your family, friends, and others and say, gosh, I'd love to go boating, but we're going to have to go to Pasadena, as great as Pasadena is? It's a long ways away from here. So, thank you very much for what you've done. Please, 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 continue to push hard.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Lisa Aerosmith, 7703 Side and Drive, Hanover, Maryland. I'm glad to be in front of this council to speak to you all again, this time again about Discovery Village, and congratulations on, thank you on the county council and the county government for negotiating a new lease for Discovery Village that immediately opened the boat ramp back up again. I'm looking forward to going down before the water gets too cold and putting my kayak in the water, because it's lovely fall kayaking down there with all the changing leaves. There's a couple of things I want to say. Discovery Village is for sale, and so it's still at risk. Someone else could buy it. And at that point, the lease runs out in July 2027, and we're in the position of no boat ramp again possibly. And Discovery Village is the only public boat ramp between Annapolis and Chesapeake Beach down in Calvert County. There's an estimated 21,000 trailered boats in Anaronda County. That's a lot of people, that's a lot of families, businesses getting out on the water. And as for the other uses of it, under the prior lease, the county did not lease the structures. They were expressly excluded from it. So, the county could never really, you know, work on what those buildings could be. You know, a purchase would allow them to do that, would allow. And I always say, a boat ramp's like a Christmas tree. You can hang a lot of stuff on it, you know, and the DNR Waterway Improvement Fund provides, you know, a lot of the, funding for a lot of the expensive, you know, waterfront work. Every time you touch the water, it's expensive. But then, once you get the boat ramp in, then you also have kayaks and stand-up paddleboards and canoes. There's always someone fishing. And Discovery Village is even more than that, because it can also be what, you know, a Discovery Village, public boating and community center. There are existing maritime businesses in the warehouse building. The artists and other people are interested in developing. Thank you for your consideration of my request.
Thank you, ma'am. So, is there anyone else who would wish to speak on an item not on the agenda at this time? You can share that with, with our secretary, and she'll share it with us. Yes. Mr. Minahan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, council members. I'm Matt Minahan, 3651 First Avenue, Edgewater, Maryland. I'm here this evening as Chair of the Growth Action Network. The council work session, session this past Tuesday was like a day in the life of citizen advocates like ourselves. The council's discussion of the Transportation APF Bill revealed the council's frustration with dealing with large bills that have a huge impact on the county with too little time to fully understand them. We feel your pain. That's our lives every day. Councilwoman Fiedler said, quote, "I want to understand the complete process, how we do things now, how we're proposing to do things, and in order to do that now, I don't know that there's enough time in this work session or future work sessions to do that. I'll just share a bit of frustration that we're going to be playing catch-up for a very short timeframe. This is not the first time that a big impactful, multi-page bill has been introduced to the council, and we're on rapid fire to try to catch up and learn all the nuances of the process." Councilwoman Pickard said, quote, "If we'd had a report that was presented of the findings of the Transportation APF a couple of months ago, and then we were dealing with the legislation now, we wouldn't be on a 95-day shot clock." This is extremely frustrating for council members. I think it's important to emphasize that. This is an extremely frustrating situation to find ourselves in again. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Gan and other citizens have been at this table with this very complaint for years. You are making the case for us, for creating a planning commission to include expert review and public testimony on bills just like this prior to introduction to the council, to provide more time for public input and independent expert analysis to the council when a bill is introduced. We'll have more to say on this in the future, but we want to let you know we share your pain every day, and especially on alternating Mondays. And we'd love to have this meeting via hybrid. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Svensson.
Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. As I was preparing to write down my concerns earlier today, I got this sense of déjà vu all over again, and sure enough, I was able to pull out my December 18, 2023 invitation-to-audience testimony to this council. I'm here to, I'm reading from it directly. Picking up on what Mr. Minahan just spoke to you, I'm here to express my concern that the process leading up to the introduction of legislation often lacks public engagement and transparency. My written testimony provides a number of recent examples of comprehensive bills that have purportedly undergone significant study in stakeholder engagement, yet there is no transparency of the study efforts or data reviewed prior to introduction or even afterwards. Most often, the first chance for a citizen to get any background information about upcoming legislation is at a council work session, which may not even happen, like with the schools' APF bill two years ago. If a working group is formed to explore options, engage stakeholders, whoever they may be, and draft legislation, why is its membership, meeting schedule, and agendas, data reviewed, and reports not routinely made publicly available? Why are the many boards and commissions, already existing boards and commissions, not asked to review and make recommendations on drafts of these comprehensive bills? My written testimony provides examples of such missed opportunities and suggests a fundamental reason why, as cynical as it may be. This sentiment is often expressed by supporters of bills like these that, oh, let's not make perfection the enemy of the good. That's great political prose, but I offer an alternative translation. It's good enough for government work. We can do better than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Svensson. So, the invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Okay. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of the legislative session of October 6, 2025.
The county council meeting was
The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Hummer at 7:03 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Ledbetter and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Cub Scout Packs 2214 and 445. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the legislative session of October 6, 2025?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The minutes of the legislative session of October 6, 2025 stand approved as read.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Secretary, can you add me as a co-sponsor to Bill 8225?
Yes, noted. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Secretary, could you also add me as a co-sponsor, same bill?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 8725, In Order Concerning Planning and Development, Odenton Town Center Master Plan Amendments.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 3125, Resolution Supporting the Anarundel County Board of Education's Fiscal Year 2027 Public School Construction Capital Improvement Program Request for Submission to the Interagency Commission on School Construction. Resolution Number 3225, Resolution Urging the Establishment of an Adequate Public Facilities Study Group to Address the Need for an Electrical Grid Impact Review for New Development.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7725 as amended.
Bill Number 7725, In Order Concerning Personnel Pay Plan, Classification Plan, Department of Inspections and Permits, Department of Aging and Disabilities, Positions in the Classified Service, Police Department, Public Ethics, Financial Disclosure.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Ann Badowski, our personnel officer, and Lori Blair Klosmire, our deputy county attorney. Bill 7725 has been discussed at a number of prior council sessions. It makes a couple of position reclassifications in the Police Department, Department of Inspections and Permits, and Department of Aging and Disabilities. We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 7725 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 7725? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 7725 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7725 as amended.
Bill Number 7725, In Order Concerning Personnel Pay Plan, Classification Plan, Department of Inspections and Permits, Department of Aging and Disabilities, Positions in the Classified Service, Police Department, Public Ethics, Financial Disclosure.
Okay. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 7725 as amended.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none on the negative. Bill Number 7725 as amended has passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3025.
Resolution Number 3025, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anarundel County to Permit All Authorized Employee Representatives to Enter into Binding Arbitration to Resolve Labor Disputes Relating to the Terms and Conditions of Employment.
Ms. Pickard, this is your resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This resolution before the council is to put a charter amendment on the November 2026 ballot that, if approved by voters, would extend access to binding arbitration for all county employee bargaining units during the collective bargaining process. Currently, only public safety bargaining units in the county have access to binding arbitration when contract negotiations reach an impasse. This resolution seeks to ensure that all county employees represented by a union are afforded the same opportunity for a fair and impartial resolution process. I urge my colleagues' support and hope this passes.
And there we go. Mr. Smith.
Just co-sponsor.
Okay.
Oh, noted. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yes, and I just want to echo what Ms. Pickard said. I want to see all of our unions have the same rights as each other, and so it's time to bring us all up to par on that. Does the administration have anything that they would like to say?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Again, I have Ann Badowski, our personnel officer, and Lori Blair Klosmire, our deputy county attorney. I think our administration is very proud of the relationship that we have with our bargaining units and the work that we've done over the past several years to bring them up to parity with some of our surrounding jurisdictions. I think it's a, it speaks to that relationship, the fact that we haven't had to come to an impasse at any point and that our, we always end up arriving at a bargaining agreement with our various unions. This does place them on parity with the public safety unions as well. We're happy to support it, and we think the voters should get that say.
Is there any further discussion? But we will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 3025. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece, which was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Signed up ahead of time, we have Scott Chismar, Kevin Nethers, Tim Kingston, and Christian Gobel. And if there's anyone else who wishes to speak, you may come up at this time as well. Go right ahead.
Scott Chismar, 1724 Ted Berry Street, Crofton. I am a business agent from Teamsters Local 355. We currently have four collective bargaining agreements with the county. We have the Fire Battalion Chiefs, the Correctional Program Specialists, the 911 folks, and we have our Park Rangers, several who came out to lend support to this tonight, so I wanted to thank them. But I'm very much in favor of this, and I want to encourage the resolution to move forward. Right now, I would categorize our relationship with the county as very healthy and very positive. That doesn't say, mean to say we get everything we ask for. Ann and Judy and Deborah are tough at the table, but they're respectful and they're fair. At the end of the day, we've been able to pass and ratify all of our collective bargaining agreements since I've known the group. But the big thing is respect, and it's there, but it may not be there. We see what's going on with the feds right now, and the folks that are here with me tonight, they really enjoy their job. They're proud to work for Anarundel County. They're proud of the work that they do. They do some hard work. I've been in the jail with Stephanie. Our Fire Battalion Chiefs, as you know, they currently have interest arbitration, but I've seen them racing the fires back and forth. I've seen Nate take good care of the parks. Again, they're good folks that they deserve this. Like I said, the piece that's happening on the feds right now is unconscionable. It could turn at the drop of a hat. I serve at the pleasure of my members. All of you folks up there, you're elected. We could all be gone, and a new crew could come in and have a much different attitude towards the people. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Kevin Nethers with Anarundel County Local 582. My address is 1210 Hinton Drive in Huntington, Maryland. I'd just like to start out saying good evening, Chair Hummer, Vice Chair Rodvian, and members of the council. My name is Kevin Nethers. I work as a water systems tech with Anarundel County. I also serve as the president of Ask Me Local 582. I am here tonight to testify in strong support of Resolution 3025, which proposes an amendment to the county charter that, if passed, would enable authorized employer representatives in the county to access binding interest arbitration to resolve labor disputes relating to terms and conditions of employment. Our local thanks Councilwoman Pickard, Chair Hummer, and Vice Chair Rodvian for sponsoring the resolution. Ask Me Local 582 members work every day to deliver critical public services to the residents of Anarundel County. Our members work in wide varieties of roles and across several departments, including public works, recreation and parks, animal services, central services, and so many more. Without the tireless work of our members, our communities would not be able to function, and they deserve a collective bargaining process that recognizes their value and dignity of their work. In 2002, the voters of Anarundel County overwhelmingly approved amendments to the county charter that permitted binding interest arbitration for authorized representatives of law enforcement employees and firefighters to resolve labor disputes relating to their terms and conditions of employment. Over 20 years have passed since then, and it is well past time that binding arbitration was permitted for other labor unions and represented employees of Anarundel County. Binding interest arbitration is a time-tested and proven method to peacefully resolve labor disputes between management and labor when they remain at impasse in negotiations. This method promotes fair, faithful, and collective bargaining process by ensuring both management and labor will have a fair opportunity to resolve negotiation disputes by a neutral third party if they cannot reach an agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, we strongly ask you guys to support this. And if I could, real quick, could I ask everybody that's here in support of it that's a county employee to please stand?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Hummer, Vice Chair Rodvian, and members of the council. My name is Christian Gobel with Ask Me, Maryland Council III. Our council represents approximately 50,000 public employees across the state of Maryland, including city, county, state, higher education, K-12, and community college employees. Our members work from western Maryland to the eastern shore to deliver critical public services every single day across our state. Our council thanks Councilmember Pickard, Chair Hummer, Vice Chair Rodvian, and Councilmember Smith for sponsoring and co-sponsoring this resolution. This resolution will present the voters of Anarundel County with the question of whether all authorized employee representatives should have the ability to utilize binding interest arbitration to resolve labor disputes relating to the terms and conditions of their employment. Our council is in strong support of this resolution, and we respectfully ask the members of the council to approve this resolution. Public employees, unlike private sector employees, do not have the right to strike. In the public sector, binding interest arbitration is the tool to level the negotiations' playing field between management and labor. Without this tool, public employees may be at a significant disadvantage to reach a fair agreement with their employer. As previously noted, binding interest arbitration has existed here in Anarundel County for more than 20 years for law enforcement and fire unions. And additionally, all of our employee organizations that represent public school employees across the state of Maryland have access to this dispute resolution process as well, including in Anarundel County. Tonight, the members of this council have the opportunity to take action to promote dignity and respect for the public employees of this county by enabling an important tool for fair negotiations for all of its employees. We respectfully request your support for this resolution, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, members of the county council. My name is Mike Akers, 101 Forest Drive, Pasadena, Maryland. I retired in 2020 after 34 years with the Anarundel County government. I spent 26 years as a union representative, including 19 years as president of Local 582. I was directly involved in multiple contract negotiations, and the vast majority of those ended with fair contractual agreements. So, why the need for binding arbitration? Because when a negotiation does not end fairly, the damage caused to the employees involved can negatively affect their pay and/or their benefits for their entire career. Years ago, we had a negotiation where the administration's final offer was the same as their initial offer, which was roughly half of what the cost of living allowance was for that particular year. We went to arbitration, and the arbitrator ruled for us overwhelmingly, but the administration refused to budge. We addressed the issue at a county council meeting similar to this. The county council did attempt to resolve the issue with the administration. The administration once again said no, and the county council threw their hands up and said, sorry, we're done. One of the hardest things that I've ever had to do was to go out to those work areas and tell those members that their pay increase was going to be roughly half of what they actually deserved. There was anger. There was pain. With many asking me, what do we do to deserve this? My answer was clear. This never should have happened. It never should have been allowed to happen. The administration failed them. The council failed them. And as your union representatives, I told them that we failed them because we didn't have binding arbitration. We can't change the past, but we can learn from the past and prevent the same thing from happening ever again in the future. Your vote tonight will let those employees understand that this process is to move forward, to be placed on the ballot for the voters to decide. We prefer to allow things to stay the way they are.
Thank you, Mr. Akers. Thank you. Sorry. Yes, sir.
Zach Reed, 143 Greenland Beach Road, Greenland Beach, Maryland, 21226. I'm Vice President of Ask Me Local 582, Anarundel County Public Employees. It's kind of hard to follow up that speech. Yeah, I'd like to second that and that you all support this amendment, you know. Straight to the point.
That does it. So, yes, Mr. Svensson.
Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. The county council, as the legislative branch of our local government, should be representing the people, the residents of Anarundel County, not pandering to county employees in an election year. Amending the county charter should be viewed as a sacred act, not as an emotional response to the angst associated with national political upheaval. What problem does this charter amendment address? Does county government have a history of being a bad employer? Does this county council lack the authority to step in when the administration acts unfairly? No. I mean, yes, you have the authority. Virtually all of you have expressed concern about the lack of power that is available, that you are able to exercise as a legislative branch compared to the executive branch. You've taken some steps in recent years to try to level the playing field, but this goes in the opposite direction. It's just unconscionable. As noted in the fiscal note, in the event the amendment is approved on the ballot, the county council would no longer be the final fiscal authority for labor negotiations, which represents about 80% of our budget. It is things like this that make me, a registered Democrat, pray for the continuation of three Republicans on this body. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on Resolution Number 3025? Okay. The public hearing on Resolution Number 3025 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3025.
Resolution Number 3025, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anarundel County to Permit All Authorized Employee Representatives to Enter into Binding Arbitration to Resolve Labor Disputes Relating to the Terms and Conditions of Employment.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank all the county employees that came down to lend their support. This is an exciting night. This will put this, again, on the November general election ballot for the voters of Anarundel County to decide. This is, as we recognized, what, six of our now world-famous, world-accolade employees, this is, it's time. It's time to bring a level playing field for our, all of our bargaining units, not just public safety. So, I ask again for my colleagues' support, and I look forward to voting aye. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Again, thank you for the union employees that did make it out here today. I, you know, I remember back in 2012 and was certainly aware of what happened in 2011 when this body passed a piece of legislation that said that they were going to be the final fiscal authority, and as they were making cuts and had agreements already sort of signed in place, it was going to impact the unions, specifically the public safety unions, who brung the initial lawsuit against this. So, shout out to Obi Atkinson. I think he was one of the lead charges in this. And what was so unfair is that this body at the time thought that it was in their best interest to, you know, void out agreements and commitments that they had made already. And so, I love Mr. Svensson. He is a hero in my book, but I think we disagree on this one, because human nature is what it is, and this body could change, whether it's, at the time, it was, it was four Rs and three Ds that eliminated that ability for that contract or that binding arbitration to stand in place, to stay in place. And so, I do think it's time. I do think it's necessary to have a mechanism in place that when we commit to something, that we keep our that we keep our word, no matter how hard it is to make that happen. And so this is just one step. Obviously, this goes to the voters and for the county to decide, but this is a much-needed step in the right direction to allow sanity to prevail because I have seen this council be insane at times in how we sort of legislate and how we pass legislations that impact citizens as well as members here, county employees throughout the county. So thank you all for, and I encourage my colleagues to support this as well. And I do want to make one note. The president of your local for the last, you know, 20 years, both of them, whoever is in that position, for some reason, their hair turns mighty gray. So I don't know how much stress you put on them, but Kevin, your hair is extremely gray tonight. And so thank you for taking on that stress and representing your employees. Take care.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank Mr. Sivenson for his prayers, and I hope that your prayers are answered and that we continue to have three seats on the Republican side. But I will tell you tonight, I'm not sure that those three seats are going to do what you want them to do because I'll just say this, echoing some of the comments of my colleagues. The reality is, this is a bit of a parody issue. There are already employees in the county in bargaining units who have the ability to go to binding arbitration. The history of binding arbitration is actually more mixed than people would think. There may be some impression that every time that the union and the county go to binding arbitration, that it ultimately, the union prevails. That's false. In fact, many times, the county prevails. As I reminded someone from the union that I was speaking to earlier today about, the reality is that the county always still has more information. You know, the union is always trying to gather as much information as they can when they go to the bargaining table, but the reality is that management often has still an upper hand when it comes to information. So that comes out sometimes in arbitration, and that can impact what the arbitrator does. This gives both sides the opportunity to continue to put their case on in front of the arbitrator and make that decision. So ultimately, I'm going to support this. It's a vote for the people in this county who are the working people, really. This is not a vote for management. This is not a vote for positions that people might go, "Wow, that's a really exciting job." These are the jobs that make things go. To what Ms. Hummer was saying earlier about, you know, we don't have to worry about clean water, we don't have to worry about trash pickup, we don't have to worry about the landfills operating, these are the people who are doing these jobs. And as much as I love the folks in public safety, it's sometimes it's really easy to get jazzed about, "Man, we love the police, man, we love the fire." It's less easy to get excited about, "Man, we love people who are sanitation workers," or, "Man, we love people who are doing, you know, the water processing plant." So we all see you, we all hear you, we all thank you for what you're doing. And with that, I look forward to voting with my colleagues to support this for you and putting this on the ballot so that the voters of Anarondle County have an opportunity to decide whether this is something that we all want for our county.
Ms. Raviyan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is rare that I get to say this, but I will just echo and say ditto to everything my colleague, Mr. Volkey, just said because I really believe that, you know, we should allow our, our voters and the residents and voters of Anarondle County to decide whether or not they believe that this is an issue that, that should be treated with equity and have the same opportunity to go forward to binding arbitration for all of the, you know, like employee groups that already have that opportunity. So ditto to Mr. Volkey.
Yes, let's, let's mark that on the calendar so we all remember that. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would just also add, the first time that I learned the story that Mr. Akers told today was back in 2017 when we first met. So yes, there is an election around the corner, but this story has been longstanding, and I thank you for sharing that again tonight. You jogged my memory. In that time since 2017, I know I've gotten to know employees, county workers. I've heard of stories of men and women in, in manhole, under, you know, the, the manhole cover, they take it off and they go in and it's hot and it's dirty and there's not a lot of air, working with animals that are really challenging. I mean, you name it, you guys do it. And to the folks that were awarded earlier today, you are the unsung heroes, unrecognized folks, and it's time that we finally address something that's been outstanding for a very long time.
All right. No further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 3025.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven and the affirmative, none and the negative, Resolution Number 3025 has been adopted.
There we go. Good job. All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6725 as amended.
Bill Number 6725, in ordinance concerning floodplain management, erosion and sediment control, and stormwater management, clearing and pruning.
All right. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Eric Michelson, our Senior Environmental Policy Officer and Deputy Director of the Bureau of Watershed Protection and Restoration, Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney, Ragubadami, our Assistant Director of IMP, and, I'm not sure, Nathan Markline, our, our Code Enforcement Administrator. This bill has been discussed several times at several prior hearings. It is to clarify the tree trimming laws in Anarondle County. Happy to answer any questions or turn it over to Mr. Michelson if he wants to add any additional comments.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All right, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6725 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece, which was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 6725? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 6725 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6725 as amended.
Bill Number 6725, in ordinance concerning floodplain management, erosion and sediment control, and stormwater management, clearing and pruning.
Madam Secretary, please, oh, any further discussion? Ms. Fiedler?
I have one question. Sorry, I thought there might have been some public testimony. So at the, I think it was the last council meeting, we did an amendment that allowed for de minimis trimming of trees, 2,500 square feet, I think. How does a property owner who brings out a tree company to trim a few branches, how do they know, how the, how does the county calculate it so that the homeowner knows how many branches will, the threshold that puts you over that 2,500 square feet? Does that make sense?
Nathan Markline, Code Enforcement Administrator. We would look at that, if you're looking at a top-down aerial photo of that tree canopy, what is the overall coverage of that tree canopy that's being removed? I believe your average health and safety pruning around a home is not going to be anywhere near clearing 2,500 square feet. Your typical large mature oak tree is probably going to have a canopy from 1,500 to 2,500 square feet. So you'd be looking at removing like one to two large trees worth of canopy before you met that threshold.
Okay, so there is no true amount of pruning or limb removal that would get you to that point? Okay. Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Volkey.
Mr. Markline, I appreciate what you said. I've seen different instances of that where I have, in particular, one on Gibson Island that I'm looking at the email right now where they did exactly what you said. They looked at the county aerial and they found that a tree was in the forest conservation easement, and it was more than 2,500 square feet. It was, I think, a couple thousand square, I think it was like 4,000 square feet, give or take, for one tree. The tree was allegedly a dead tree, according to the tree removal company who took it down. But after it was removed, then they sort of had to try to prove that what they had done was proper because the county went after them through inspections and permits and said that this was an improper removal of a tree. And ultimately, they didn't have like any pictures of the tree or anything that they could prove it was a dead tree. So as a result, there was a really significant fine. I talked with inspections and permits. I tried to find out, was there anything that could be done to try to be what I would think is a little more reasonable in this situation? And ultimately, that was not able to happen because of the way that the code was written. So this is where my trepidation constantly comes in when we have these conversations is like, when that occurs, in my mind, I'm going, where's the common sense, right? Like where, if you have a tree company that's out there and the tree company says, "This is a dead tree, we had to take it down," at what point does IMP go, "All right, we're going to believe them." And at what point do you say, "Well, they're just a bunch of liars. They're probably not truthful, they're a problem." How do you do that? Because to me, it would seem like these people are professionals, they're taking down a tree. If anybody's going to know whether it's a dead tree or not, it's going to be those companies, but if you're not kind of listening to what they say, then it puts everybody in the spot where it almost feels like the code is really going after people as opposed to being there as kind of a guidepost, which is what I think is more what you all want it to be. So anything you can say to that, I would appreciate. You pick whichever part of it you want to respond to.
Sure. Nathan Markline, Code Enforcement Administrator for inspections and permits. If, if someone were removing, you know, individual dead limbs off of a tree, it would effectively have no canopy that's being removed, so there wouldn't be a square footage attributed to that. Similarly, if they were removing a singular dead tree, it would not be a calculation of canopy removed.
Just for it to be dead, it would have to have no leaves?
Yeah, so I think, I believe some of the confusion comes in that we do have some professional tree services, landscape companies, they may identify a tree that is declining or has other health issues.
Okay.
And they use the general term, calling it dead, while that's not the case. So we are looking at those trees on a case-by-case basis. We're evaluating the health and vigor of that tree, how much of that canopy is actually remaining at that time. And we're, we're not using a year-old aerial photo that showed when that tree was a 2,000 square foot canopy. We're looking at that size of that canopy in its current state today. Over 50% of that canopy is no longer there, and it's either being reduced or we're assessing that tree as a hazard, which has even less mitigation requirements.
Okay, so just to follow up on this and make sure I'm clear. So basically, you're looking at the aerials, and if you look at the aerials and you see that the tree doesn't have leaves, for lack, I mean, I guess that's it because that's the cover, then you might be willing to agree with the tree company, whoever they are, and say, "Yes, this is a dead or dying tree." But if you look at it and it looks from the aerials to be a perfectly healthy tree, then it's your position, that tree was healthy, and you shouldn't have taken it down. Is that an overly simplistic but general way of how you all would look at it?
In general, if it's not a tree that we've seen in person and we don't have additional photo documentation to assist us. One thing that's been very helpful is we have aerial photo imagery that comes in three times a year now, so we get a February, a June, and I believe an October reading. So you can really track and see if a tree is going through decline, you can really see those stages, especially with the October, because if the tree is stressed and declining, it's likely dropping leaves significantly early compared to other trees of the same species. So there have been several instances where we've been able to use those aerial photos on the higher-frequency collection to actually support the claims of the residents of that tree being in declining situation.
And then on the flip side, to refute the claims that it was actually declining or dying, if you were going to issue a fine?
Correct. If it had a beautiful green canopy in October, it's hard to say that it was dead in November.
Okay. This particular one that I have, it was 4,163 square feet of canopy loss in the forest conservation easement. Mitigation was at a three-point, three-to-one ratio and a $4.50 square foot fine totaling 12,489 square feet of mitigation, and $56,200 was the bond that had to be submitted for that one. That was to a property owner in my district for the removal of one tree. So that is why I have so much trepidation when we are talking about what we're going to do here and how we're going to streamline this and make this easier by bringing more people under the umbrella of inspections and permits, right? So is there anything you can say to me that's going to make me feel better about this? Because I have to go back to my constituents and explain to them why I voted one way or the other on this, and I'm having a hard time getting to a place where I can feel comfortable with it, knowing that this is but one of a number of these instances that I've seen since 2019 when we passed the forest conservation law and that took a lot of these fines way up, and I've had constituents who've reached out to me with these problems.
So to, to circle back to your initial question, you were asking about the 2,500 square foot canopy pruning threshold.
Sure.
To where you would not need a permit if you were pruning that amount of canopy.
Yeah, yeah.
If you were properly pruning that tree per the agricultural NTA 300 standards, to do that much pruning and still stay within the spec of the standards, there would be minimal effect to the trees. You would not have so much canopy removed that that tree is now effectively gone and that canopy has been cleared. If somebody removed 2,500 square feet off of a singular tree, they've effectively cleared that tree, so the...
Is that called topping? Is that what you guys call that? When you like sort of lop off the top?
Yeah, so if they indiscriminately just cut the entire top out of the tree, that is considered topping.
Gotcha, okay.
So if they were doing whole tree removal in the forest conservation easement, that would require review and permitting and always has. So that part would not change if it was removal of the whole tree inside of the conservation easement.
But the pruning inside the forest conservation easement is going to be allowed up to 2,500 square feet with the vegetation management plan? Without a vegetation?
Without of it, yeah. So it's actually, it's actually going to be more lenient now with that 2,500 square foot allowance.
I guess the concern I have, I, I told, I told Mr. Michelson I was going to do this because you had someone from a tree, I'm not going to use names because I don't want to put anybody on blast, but there was a tree company that was involved in developing this with the county work group. That's great. I talked to another company, and I discussed this bill with them, and the company that I talked to had some concerns that the impacts this would have on residential and light commercial properties was going to be kind of significant. And one of the suggestions that they'd given to me was the idea of, if a tree company says to you, they certify this tree was dead or dying, and we took it down and we had to do it, or we had to prune it, or whatever it was, and we did this thing, you all just kind of believe them. The concern I have is, I don't know that there's any way that's going to happen. I'm not sure you all are just going to take their word for it, right? We have this in law sometimes where I make a statement to the court, and the court says, "Well, you're an officer of the court, so you have a higher obligation to be truthful." I don't know whether you have that with tree companies or not, but the point is, I wonder if there's something we could do like that to put this in a position where if an outside entity that is professionally operating in this space says, "We did this and it was the right thing to do," you almost give them the benefit of the doubt. Is that something we can work on either with this or something else?
So, yeah. Eric Michelson, Senior Environmental Policy Officer. So I think there's a couple of things. One is, the situation you've described is problematic currently, would be problematic if this bill doesn't pass, would be problematic probably if this bill does pass. But the issue is, at least, you know, below the 2,500 square foot clearing threshold or pruning threshold, they could, they could get away with that without having any kind of permit vehicle essentially. So that's, I think, in your eyes, an improvement.
Even in the forest conservation easement?
Even in a forest conservation, yes. So there's a, there's a loosening, not a complete loosening to the extent that you're talking about, but I'll, I'll remind you also that we, we did have a representative from Gibson Island on the work group that helped put this together. And in fact, there was a lot of discussion about how, again, in a waterfront community, there's oftentimes interest in allowing some sort of vegetation to occur within the sort of buffer area, but there are a lot of considerations about blocking view sheds and that kind of thing, and that, again, the creation of the Habitat Enhancement Plan, which allows up to an acre of vegetative management within this document, does not exist now. And so there is some flexibility there. I think the specific situation that you're describing might be worth pursuing. You know, we're out of amendments on this bill, I think, at this point, but, you know, I think this de minimis exemption that was added at Councilwoman Fiedler's suggestion wasn't initially within the scope of the bill, but I think it's an improvement in terms of having it just because it does allow some flexibility there. So I think, again, I know there's skepticism that somehow this is mission creep, but I think the reality is that this bill actually, in a lot of ways, makes life easier for people who've got either forest conservation easements or are contemplating these kinds of activities on their property.
I appreciate that you're picking up what I'm putting down about the concern, not, I wouldn't necessarily say mission creep, but unintended consequences, pieces of this that I can't see at the moment, but that's what I worry about, right? I don't, I want to be in a spot where somebody is getting a $56,000 bond that they're having to put up, and we're going, that might not have been the best thing to vote on, so. All right, thank you for that. That was a helpful answer.
So one thing that we, inspections and permits would definitely look into... So, one thing that we, inspections and permits, will definitely look into, bring in some tree companies to the table, we'll, we'll work on that offline. One nuance that I would add, we did have situations where tree company taken no names, has said, this was a dead tree, and either within a month, two months, there was a development application that we received. So, I think there was a, we do see that happen. I'm not saying that across the board, but that does occur from time to time, too, where there was a development intent, and we now know that why the tree was clear. So, but we, we will look into that suggestion of bringing the tree companies to see how we can have an honor code, maybe. I'm not sure how that would exactly work, but that's something that we will...
Yeah, I think it's the right word for it. Professionals and you extend to other people.
No problem. Mr. Smith?
Just briefly, when it, when it comes to new, specifically for IMP, as we pass through laws and provisions that impact the county and community specifically, what is, what is your mechanism or process for ensuring we have an adequate workforce that's able to remediate or respond to incidents? Because we're a complaint-driven system here in Anarondo, so if someone complains about it, you send someone out. Obviously, right now, you all get a lot of complaints about everything. And so, what's, what's the internal sort of pipeline or pathway to being able to effectively, if this passes, how are you going to manage that? Like, what does that look like from your perspective?
Ragubadami with the inspections and permits. So, one of the things that, to the point that Eric brought up, I think this, this will actually streamline some of the workload, kind of manage it in a better manner. One example is that, right now, whenever there is vegetative management up to, let's say, 4,000 square feet, that has to be submitted under individual vegetative management plans. So, one of the things that we do see will happen is that, as an alternative, the Habitat Enhancement Plan will now allow those to be bundled up. So, it streamlines either the applicant coming to the county and also from the review standpoint, looking at a little bit of a larger area. So, that will help add some efficiencies to both sides. It's kind of one of the things that we anticipate coming out of the bill. And also, invasives have been a bigger issue. That's something that we are looking to see how the Habitat Enhancement Plan can be a vehicle to either better manage them from an HOA or other nonprofit standpoint. I think we do see this bill helping with that.
Will you hire additional folks or something like that to do, or are you going to do this with the current footprint that you have in place?
At this time, we think we can manage with the workload, but that's something that we are trying to monitor on a regular basis. As a part of the budgetary process, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Understood. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Michelson, I appreciate your clarification that the example of 56,000 happened under current code, and this bill doesn't, wouldn't necessarily change that particular case at this point in time. I wanted to ask, and maybe I'm opening up a can of worms for Mr. Markline, would you recommend that anyone in a Forest Conservation Easement or critical area who's considering or seeking out the removal of a tree, ask the county to come out first and, and get documentation?
Nathan Markline, Code Enforcement Administrator, Inspections and Permits. We do field requests like that quite often. We'll get requests for, you know, our forestry team's expertise on a regular basis in a variety of applications. And internally, we've, we've generally followed the practice of if it's an area that's going to require our review on a permit anyway, why not go out ahead of time? You know, we have to go take a look at it at one point or another. So, we do a lot of field visits where we're, we're looking at trees for people, we're giving them our, you know, free advice. We probably spend more time doing education and outreach on a 1-on-1 on these visits than we are actually reviewing the work for the permit. So, yes, we could do visits beforehand. I know there's been concern, too, about the access to the ANSI standards. So, we can make sure that all of our foresters have those standards in hand. So, when we're doing those pre-application visits, if somebody wants to see the standards, we're bringing them to them as well. But all of our staff are Maryland roadside tree experts. Half of us are ISA-certified arborists. The rest have the goal to get there as well. So, we're able to, you know, explain these processes to them in general terms, and if they want to see the actual code, we can make that available to them, either in person at their home or at the offices if they were to come.
Great, and I appreciate that. I will say, from personal experience, and also hearing from a constituent in Saffrona Park who I referenced at the last meeting, whenever there is a request for you or any of your colleagues to come out and take a look at a tree, the turnaround is often quicker than a tree removal company can get out there. So, if anybody just wants to know from personal experience, it's not time extensive, and I appreciate it, the work you put in.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Let's see how this goes. I'm struggling with laryngitis, folks, so everyone, I appreciate your patience. I, coming into tonight, I had a lot of the same concerns that Mr. Volkey had, so I really appreciate the conversation that just took place. But, Mr. Michelson, your comments in particular to Mr. Volkey, you moved me from a, I'm not so sure, to a position where I think supporting this bill is going to be the right move. So, really appreciate that, the dialogue tonight. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 6825 as amended.
We're going to do 6725 first.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're jumping ahead to the next one. Sorry about that.
Ms. Ledbetter.
6725.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven and the affirmative, none and the negative. Bill Number 6725 as amended has passed.
All right. Now, we'll move on to, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6825.
Bill Number 6825, in ordinance concerning public safety zoning animal rescue.
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Joining me at the table, I have Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, Claudia Roll, our Director of Animal Services, and Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney. Bill 6825 has been discussed and amended at a number of prior council meetings. It allows animal rescue operations in certain zoning districts, along with creating some licensing standards and inspection standards. We're happy to answer any questions.
All right. Is there any questions or discussion? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6825 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 6825? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 6825 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6825 as amended.
Bill Number 6825, in ordinance concerning public safety zoning animal rescue.
Any further discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 6825 as amended.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven and the affirmative, none and the negative. Bill Number 6825 as amended has passed.
Thank you for coming in. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7125 as amended.
Bill Number 7125, in ordinance concerning public campaign financing, dispersment of public contribution, funding for public campaign financing fund.
All right. This is my bill, and once again, the main purpose of this bill is to create a procedure by which we could supplement funds to the public campaign financing account outside of the normal budgets process and to add an auditing measure for public campaign financing. So, Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney, Brian Shanker, Tax Billing Manager, and Chris Trumbauer, our Budget Officer. We support this legislation, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there any discussion? We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 7125 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received four pieces, which were shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 7125? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 7125 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7125 as amended.
Bill Number 7125, in ordinance concerning public campaign financing, dispersment of public contribution, funding for public campaign financing fund.
All right. Any further discussion? And again, I want to thank everyone that helped work on this bill, including the Public Financing Commission, and I appreciate all the, and the administration, that we got this to a good place. And so, Madam Secretary, now please call the roll on Bill Number 7125 as amended. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. I, I don't want to speak for any of my colleagues, but I just want to say this. While I was not initially a supporter of public campaign finance, and I still don't know that it's the right thing, I just want to be clear, I'm going to support this tonight because it was what we committed to do during budget, when we all worked together, to take some of these funds out of that particular fund and use them for some other things that we felt were very important in the county and in the budget. With that, the vote for this bill tonight is not necessarily saying I'm supportive of public campaign finance as a concept or as a vehicle for funding campaigns, but it is fulfilling the commitment and the promise that we all made when we said we were going to do this, because, to your credit, you led the charge on this and said, we're going to take this money out, but we're also going to fix this problem. And you've done that, and so, standing with you in solidarity is what we're going to do, and we are going to fix this situation, and I thank you for the work you've put in on this and the amendments and the testimony from everybody who's come out. So, I just want to make that very clear before we vote.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey. Mr. Smith?
I will be brief. Just thank the administration for clarifying. I've tried my best to stay as far away from this topic as possible, but you all, with your encouragement, have said that this is improving the process and improving the mechanism to enable this to be a capability that the county can adjust on the fly. And so, with that confirmation, I am supportive of this effort.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To use as few words as possible, I'm going to say ditto to Mr. Volkey's remarks, and thank you for using the words so I can save mine.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also echo the sentiments of my colleague. I think when we were talking about this during budget, Mr. Trumbauer came up and shared the opinion of the Office of Law with regard to what we could do with the campaign finance. I did not support the original bill. However, during that discussion, I said, well, it sounds like we need to fix that, and this bill fixes that. Thank you.
And I do think that the Budget Office is happy that we are changing it so it doesn't have to be three days if this bill passes, so that we can, it can actually be worked. So, that was an error in the original bill that needed to be fixed, so. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 7125 as amended.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven and the affirmative, none and the negative. Bill Number 7125 as amended has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7825.
Bill Number 7825, in ordinance concerning capital budget and program, Odenton Mark TOD Development Phases 1 and 2A, Maryland 170 widening, Maryland 214 and Lock Haven Road and campus improvement capital projects, supplementary and transfer appropriations.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney, Chris Trumbauer, our Budget Officer, and Melissa Beardmore, our Vice President for Learning Resource Management at Anarondo Community College. This bill, which was requested by the administration, amends the capital budget for the current fiscal year by transferring an appropriation of funding source in the Odenton Mark TOD Development and Maryland 170 widening capital projects, and amends the capital budget by making a supplementary appropriation to those projects. It also transfers $750,000 from general county bonds to other state grants for the Odenton Mark TOD project, and $22,000 from county general bonds to Maryland 170, as well as supplementary appropriations, $57,500 in community college Pago funds for the campus improvement projects, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Okay. And Mr. Volkey?
Where did we find the $57,000 in Pago?
Thank you.
Melissa Beardmore from the Community College. We sold the...
Bless you.
We sold the modular building that was there, so this is a bit of proceeds.
Okay.
And we're going to use it to restore the, the parking lot.
Cool.
All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 7825. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 7825? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 7825 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7825. Get to read that long thing again.
Bill Number 7825, in ordinance concerning capital budget program, Odenton Mark TOD Development Phases 1 and 2A, Maryland 170 widening, Maryland 214 and Lock Haven Road and campus improvements, capital projects, supplementary and transfer of appropriations.
All right. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 7825.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven and the affirmative, none and the negative. Bill Number 7825 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3025.
If that's a typo, I'm sorry. Resolution Number 2725.
Oh, okay. That was a typo. That wasn't me messing that one up. I just want to tell everybody, I was reading what's in front of me. 27, Resolution 2725.
Resolution Number 2725, resolution concerning a petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anarondo County Community College Funding for the Drug and Science Building.
All right. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Again, Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney, Melissa Beardmore, our Vice President for Learning and Resource Management at Anarondo Community College, and Chris Trumbauer, our Budget Officer. Resolution 2725 supports the petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission, also known as MHEC, for state funding for the Dragoon building renovation in the amount of $824,997. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions, discussion? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 2725. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Resolution Number 2725? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Resolution Number 2725 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2725.
Resolution Number 2725, resolution concerning a petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anarondo Community College Funding for the Drug and Science Building.
Okay. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 2725. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 2725.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 2725 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2825.
Resolution Number 2825, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anorondale Community College Funding for the Floristano Building.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have the same team joining me at the table. This is another resolution supporting a request to MHEC for the Floristano renovation in the amount of $7,550,67. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any discussion? All right, we will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 2825. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Resolution Number 2825? Okay, seeing no movement, the public hearing on Resolution Number 2825 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2825.
Resolution Number 2825, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anorondale Community College Funding for the Floristano Building.
All right, any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 2825.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 2825 has been adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7625 as amended.
Bill Number 7625, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety Sidewalks Removal of Snow and Ice.
So, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Joining me at the table are Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney, Karen Henry, our Director of the Department of Public Works, Alex Bakie, our Deputy Director for the Bureau of Highways, and Holly Velez, our Chief of Licensing for inspections and permits. So this bill was discussed at a prior council meeting. It would make some changes to how we manage removal of snow and ice on sidewalks in the county. It would shift enforcement away from the police department, which currently has the authority to issue $10 citations for people who don't shovel the snow and ice on their sidewalks. This would move it to inspections and permits. It would give people 24 hours to remove the snow and ice from their sidewalks following the end of a snowstorm. Once that 24 hours is up, if a complaint is made, IMP could issue a warning, giving someone an additional 24 hours to clear the snow and ice from their sidewalk. We do have an amendment that we can discuss at the appropriate time, based on some feedback we got at the last meeting, to clarify and limit the fines. But we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had some questions come from constituents who reviewed the legislation. What happens in a circumstance where someone clears the sidewalk in front of their home overnight hours? The 24-hour mark hits, but plows are out still pushing snow to the side. What if a plow pushes the snow onto the sidewalk that the resident shoveled, but now their sidewalk is no longer clear and they are, someone turns them in?
Who's going to take that one?
Hi, Holly Velez, Chief of Licensing. Good evening, everyone. I think that would be viewed on a case-by-case basis as the sidewalks would show that they had been cleared. County has come through and dumped snow. Unless there's a complaint, we wouldn't even check it. If there is a complaint, then we would have to go out, but that would still allow them the additional 24 hours to clear.
Okay.
Alex Bakie, Deputy Director, Bureau of Highways, DPW. And I'll just add to that, Councilwoman Fiedler. We would certainly share information with inspections and permits. We have AVLs on our plow trucks. We know where they are. Typically, when I see that, it's in a very severe event. We're typically talking 12 inches or more where we may get that kind of windrow coming off that can reach far enough that we're covering up sidewalks, and then that becomes a known issue. Typically, on the normal Maryland weather that we face, we don't see our plows covering the sidewalk with snow. But again, we can create open lines of communication. I think we can manage that issue.
I appreciate that. In full disclosure, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I? Okay. The folks that I'm hearing from have had issues in the past and are at the very end of a cul-de-sac. And just by the nature of plowing a cul-de-sac, that is where the majority of the snow goes. And I understand that our plow drivers really don't have an option when working in a cul-de-sac, but I wanted to have that answer on the record for the constituents.
All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 7625 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received nine pieces, which we'll share with the council, add it to the record, and post it to the website.
Okay, we will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Paul Higgins and Matthew Pipkin signed up ahead of time. And if there is anyone else here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 7625, you may come up at this time as well. All right, Mr. Higgins.
Good evening, council members. Good evening as well. My name is Paul Higgins, president of Woodhalm Circle Community Association. Today, I sent you a quick snapshot from the design documents for the Jumper's Whole Road Capital Improvement Project. Our concern with this project gets compounded with Bill 7625. As Ms. Fiedler, I think your question was spot on. So for that reason, as it's currently written, we would oppose the legislation. We don't oppose the need to make sure things are possible in the right level or path going forward, but as this bill is written, it's unreasonable. As I sat and listened to the council discussion in the last meeting, I had flashbacks when I was responsible for snow removal planning and operations across similar large campuses in the Baltimore, Washington region that maintained 24/7 operations. I also provided consulting to sites around the continental United States, from Denver to northeast. So every area has a different situation to deal with. Not every storm is the same. I listened to the discussions on cutting grass and cleaning trash ordinances now on the books and to try to draw the equivalence. They are not equivalent, okay? Those ordinance that I mentioned first are a result of somebody's negligence. Snow issues are an active guide to get dumped on somebody that they have to deal with. I encourage you to think through this as clearing snow and ice in the Piedmont region of Maryland is not a science but an art. Perhaps the correct metric for fines should be driven by slips, trips, and falls. I'm not sure, based on the thaw-free cycle in this area, you will ever be able to remove all ice and snow in a 24-hour period.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
Good afternoon, members of the Anorondale County Council. It's great to be back. For the record, Matt Pipkin, 655 Burton's Cove Way, Annapolis, Maryland, here representing the Maryland Multi-Housing Association. We represent apartment communities and property management groups from across the state of Maryland, representing over 210,000 rental units. Plenty of them in Anorondale County. I've submitted my testimony, so I'll try to be brief. By and large, our members, within 24 hours, are clearing the light snow. I mean, this is a given. You know, besides it being a nuisance to tenants and staff alike, you know, there's obviously liability and safety concerns. But, you know, in the scenario, we are requesting amendments because they're, you know, in the scenario of a large snowstorm where we may be having to prioritize certain areas, especially in a garden-style apartment complex, you know, you might be focused on the handicap parking, the entryways, the exitways, the simple residential sidewalks. The last thing a lot of our members are going to be focused on is probably the sidewalk that's budding the county road that, again, is not within the complex, is not a, you know, first matter of safety. All that we're looking for is an amendment similar to Mr. Volkey's for 7925 that would essentially say that we, you know, best efforts are being shown and give IMP discretion in those scenarios to say, "Okay, we see that they're clearing snow. They'll get to this. Let's not, let's just be fair." Happy to take questions.
Thank you. Ms. Mason. Ms. Mason.
Good evening, council. My name is Van Mason, and I reside at 338 Fairfield Drive, 7 Maryland 21144. This bill requires homeowners to clear sidewalks within 24 hours of a snowstorm, with fines that escalate up to $500 per day. The problem is that even the county itself does not meet this 24-hour standard. Public Works acknowledges that residential plowing can take 36 hours in normal storms and up to six days in major ones. Yet residents are held to a higher standard than the county. This bill is also unsafe. Every year, snow shoveling causes over 11,000 ER visits and nearly 100 deaths, mostly from heart attacks and falls. For seniors, disabled residents, or those with health risks, a 24-hour requirement is simply dangerous. And in major storms, it's not even possible to hire private contractors. They're overwhelmed. Instead of punishing residents, we need a fair system, a 48-hour timeline, fines that are reasonable, and exemptions or assistance for at-risk populations. That approach balances accountability with public safety and common sense. In addition, I offered some constructive alternatives to propose. Neighboring counties such as Prince George's County use more reasonable 48-hour timelines with modest fines. This bill also admits older adults 55 and older need exemptions, proving that 24-hour standard is unrealistic for many. Major snowstorms such as January 2025 demonstrate that one-size-fits-all deadlines does not work in real conditions. Some alternatives, adopt the 24-hour-plus-24-hour cure model, warning at 24 hours, citation only after 48. Scale compliant deadlines with storm severity. An example, 24-hour small storms, 72-hour for major. Provide hardship exemptions and caregiver allowances for seniors and medically at-risk residents. In addition, create a county-supported assistant registry with vet contractors as well.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. Mr. Svensson.
Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. I think most of the public concern that I heard at public meetings and so forth was about snow removal on sidewalks. It's focused on the inability of schoolchildren to safely navigate their way to school on sidewalks, which are not cleared. I think, why shouldn't we just focus our efforts on designated school walking routes rather than taking a one-size-fits-all approach? If you look at designated school walking routes, I think you'll find there are many segments of sidewalk that do not obviously front residential property. Whose responsibility is it to clear snow and ice from these stretches of sidewalk? By way of example, I refer to the middle school route that I'm familiar with, on the intersection of Magavista Road and Jones Station Road by the entrance of Harding Farms. If you go south down, or down Jones Station Road towards College Parkway, passing Wexford Community, and then along the stretch of College Parkway to College Drive, the entrance of Campus Green, a community which most middle school students very safely walk despite the absence of sidewalks in that part of the Campus Green community. About three-quarters of that stretch of sidewalk is either county responsibility or it's unclear whose responsibility it would be. Is the county going to hold themselves to the same standard? I can tell you with firsthand experience, these stretches of sidewalk are never cleared. In response to last year's experience, unrelated to this bill, I've begun conversations with people in these communities about organizing a volunteer shovel brigade. My sales pitch has been to highlight this as an opportunity to demonstrate to our school-age youth that we care about them as a community. Maybe county government could help facilitate that kind of community building as opposed to encouraging us all to call a complaint line on one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Svensson. Yes, sir.
David Morseburger, 125 Village Lake Drive. I was shocked while listening to the last council meeting on this topic. As I see it, the county gets a few calls about snow and their impulses authoritarian punitive rules with financial penalties on the good citizens of the county. I grew up in Maryland City, where everyone had a sidewalk and pretty much everyone helped each other out, to include shoveling the sidewalks, driveways, parking spots on the curb, and even the walkways for the postman. We had teenagers who shoveled snow to make a few extra bucks. We have never thought about turning in our neighbors to the government. Never, ever thought about that. Councilwoman Pickard, you made a comment about community in your invocation tonight, and I appreciate that. Nothing slaps a community in the face than setting up a snitch line for neighbors to turn their neighbors into the government for not shoveling snow or anything. I mean, as a wise man once said, "This is not Anorondale County." I am not sure our community has gotten over this snitch line a few years ago. I still hear about it often. I recommend you find ways to strengthen our communities instead of putting mechanism in place to further divide them on things like this. Thank you, and I hope you, I oppose this bill.
Do you vote no? Okay. All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on Bill 7625? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 7625 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7625 as amended.
Bill Number 7625, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety Sidewalks Removal of Snow and Ice.
Okay, we have four amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number Four, this amendment gives the Department of Inspections and Permits the discretion to waive any of the fines based on the ability to pay, age, or disability.
All right, Ms. Radvian, this is your amendment.
Thank you. So this is in lieu of the age cutoff. This is intended to be a much broader amendment, giving inspections and permits a lot more discretion in terms of simply waiving fees where they may have given a citation and then learn that, you know, the home is occupied by, you know, someone who is, you know, medically at risk. I think like one of our folks who testified mentioned if they were to shovel their sidewalk. And so that would be, you know, up to the discretion of the inspections and permits. And they would be, I will put on the record, they would be encouraged to use it in those circumstances if this amendment passes. I move the amendment.
Do I have a second? Second. Okay. Any discussion, questions? Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the sponsor for putting this forward. We appreciate being given the flexibility, so we would urge the council to adopt it.
Mr. Volkey.
So I would like this amendment better if it said the Department of Inspections and Permits may waive or decrease any fine issued pursuant to this section, period. Because then you're not putting these sort of parameters on it. I get where Ms. Radvian, I think where you were going, it was to try to give some guidance to inspections and permits on what the bases would be for the waiver. I have to anticipate that there could be other things here, like circumstances that related to the fine, right? I mean, if somebody's out of town and they're getting fined for it, it doesn't have to do with their ability, their age, or their disability. It has to do with circumstances. So I guess that would be my only thought with this amendment would be, I worry by trying to put these guardrails in, we're going to do what we don't necessarily mean to do, which is box them in. Because I don't think that was what your intent is at all. At least, I don't perceive it that way.
It's not. It was really to broaden it. So I would, you know, if that were an additional amendment or an amendment, you know, that kind of just gave very broad discretion, I would be comfortable with that as well, so. But I would say this at least broadens it from where it is currently in the bill. And so I would urge my colleagues' support.
Then we can add it later. Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To build off of what Councilwoman Volkey was just talking about, I had an interesting conversation today with a constituent. They did most of the talking, but talking about how they used to work in a position, actually down at Calvert Cliffs at the nuclear power plant. And when they were on shift, if a storm was scheduled, they would be told, "You have to come and you have to stay." And you'd be given a bunk and a bed, and they may not get home. And I think that's an example of another circumstance, you know, if you're on duty, whether that be, you know, our county employees, it could be military. There's a variety of folks who serve on duty, and they might need this sort of exemption as well. So just throwing that out there for...
I would be very comfortable supporting that as well if, you know, we wanted to, I don't know, if we want to try and modify this amendment or bring a different amendment.
It's your amendment, so we'll say we...
How about this? I suggest let's go forward with this. And, you know, we've got kind of a narrow exception for IMP right now, or a narrow rule for IMP right now, but let's go with this for now. And then, you know, I don't know, I'm sorry, I hate asking for amendments to be drafted in the middle of a meeting, but I think this one could be really simple. I think we could do what Mr. Volkey suggested and just end it. Where did you suggest end it?
Pursue it to this section.
Before the word "based on."
Oh, so there's no "based on," so just on any circumstances that inspections and permits found appropriate.
Ms. Fiedler.
I guess this would maybe be a point of order? Wouldn't it be best to withdraw? Then pass an amendment and then amend the amendment that just passed?
Our council is nodding her head, so I will, oh, I need someone to withdraw this. That was Ms. Pickard, thank you. I'll withdraw it if you'll, and I will withdraw my amendment pending, well, not pending, but with the anticipation, anticipating a similar amendment, hopefully shortly, if possible.
All right. So we will, that one has been withdrawn for the moment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Five.
Amendment Number Five, this amendment applies snow and ice removal requirements to all government-owned property.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some of the public testimony tonight reiterated this concern that I have, which is, I'll put it in a way that not everybody may like, but it sounds like rules for thee but not for me, right? And that's very much what this feels like when we are talking about whether this same requirement to clear sidewalks applies to governmental entities or not. So this just clarifies that this requirement to remove snow and ice is also applicable to a government... to a governmental entity. Now, there may be some who will detract from this and say, "Well, how's the government going to find itself?" Sure, great question, and I have another amendment for that in a little while. But that being said, this is the start, right, to basically make it clear that this is applicable to government entities as much as to private entities.
Look forward to your support.
Move the amendment.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Murphy, just for clarity...
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming your assumption meant that Anorond County government, is that correct? Because when I hear the word government, I also think of like Fort Meade, for example, and obviously some of our provisions don't really apply in, or state.
Right, federal offices.
So, is there a way to clarify, just to make, are you, is the administration sufficient or okay with just using that broad term government, or should it say Anorond County government?
I don't think the administration's good with this at all.
I mean, they're probably not. But just from a clarity standpoint, I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, the state government or federal government, you know, isn't sort of lumped into that word "government."
I think if we have it in our code, if we can enforce it against the state or the feds, it's not going to get enforced.
Mr. Hunt.
So, I'll just comment, if I could, Lori Blair-Klassen, our deputy county attorney. Government would include the state and federal government, we have no ability to, in any way, regulate what they do, or fine them, or anything of that nature. So, this amendment would be meaningless, and we can't find ourselves, so this one would be meaningless. And illegal.
And illegal. Mr. Hunt, I didn't ask the administration's position on this amendment.
That was going to be my response.
That this is illegal? Oh, I thought meaningless, so. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to support this amendment because I went back and looked at emails from last winter on the number of parents who had the very same complaint, who had children walking on snow-covered Broadneck Trail and the BNA Trail to get to Sabrina Park Elementary.
That's kind of... So, I appreciate the intent of this, because I agree. I think if we're trying to hold everyone to 24 hours, that it applies to all of us. I think that the actual manpower and fiscal reality of the county is that we're not able to do all of ours because we're looking at thousands of miles of sidewalks and trails and all that, and I do think our county is doing the best they can, but that is somewhat incumbent on us as a council to fund them to the level that they could do this in a 24-hour period. And so, taking out the state and federal part of it, I think we're also, we're setting an unrealistic standard for the county for their thousands of miles, as opposed to a house that has a much smaller stretch than there. So, I appreciate the intent, and I agree with you that I would like to see things cleared more, but I'm also realistic on what we are able to do with the current resources we have. So, are there any other?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Volkey, I'm sorry.
I just was going to say, I appreciate the concern about this being illegal or meaningless. I prefer a different word, I'd call it symbolic. And I think the symbolism in this says to property owners and citizens of Anorond County, "We're going to do the same thing we tell you to do." So, that's the difference, that's how I would couch this.
Yes. And I appreciate the symbolism, and I don't disregard it, because I don't disagree with you on that, but I will not be voting for this amendment. So, all right.
I do got one question for the administration. Hypothetically, how would, if there was a complaint on a county property, how would that be resolved today? Like, if there were patrons or citizens who were going to, inspections a permit, and the sidewalks weren't, you know, plowed or shoveled, and someone called it in, what happens today?
Well, we are working on getting a, we put out an RFP for a contract, so that we would be able to tap into a contract to remove snow from county-owned sidewalks that Public Works is responsible for, but any of the other departments could piggyback on as well. So, in, when that contract is in place, at last snow event, or last snow season, I'm sorry, we were unable to do anything because we didn't have the resources to do it. So, this year, we hope to have this contract in place, and we can tap into that and be proactive about the snow removal on county-owned sidewalks that are kind of in front of floodplains and things of that nature that are no man's land. And I'm sorry, this is Karen Henry, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. I realize that my question may need to be answered by Rec and Parks, but hopefully someone knows anyway. So, the trails, for example, that Councilmember Fiedler mentioned, what is the status of them being plowed, you know, and trails that are, will be coming down the pike? I would certainly hope that, you know, if we are asking students to use those trails for their route to school, or, you know, in, for a lot of individuals, they might actually use those trails to commute to work, even on a snowy day. Are they plowed, and by whom, and what's, does anyone know the status that they can share? And if, I realize Rec and Parks isn't here, because a lot of those trails are managed by Rec and Parks, correct?
They are managed by Rec and Parks, they would be responsible. I don't know their particular method, like how often they do them. I do know that the trails are not considered sidewalks, so they would not be subject to this bill.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Having gone through this last winter, Recreation and Parks loses some of their staff during snowstorms, who go help county employees plow and remove sidewalks from parking lots, county parking lots, et cetera. So, they have limited staff. They also do not consider it a sidewalk. However, the school system has deemed them walkable, certain communities walkable, and their only walkable path is a shared-use path unless they're walking along a very busy roadway. If, after seven days, the snow is not off of the paths, they will go out and remove it, but they do not like to bring out the larger vehicles, because the type of asphalt used for the shared-use path cannot hold the weight of a typical snow removal vehicle. You learn so much in this job.
So, all right. So...
Madam Chair.
Ms. Rodvian. Yes.
I guess my comment would be, I would love to see that change, and maybe that needs to be separate legislation, because I do think if we're expecting young people to use them, and again, you probably, if you were here for the transportation meeting earlier, you know I'm advocating for multimodal transportation, and that needs to be available in all-weather form, so I think we should consider bringing that back as, you know, as separate legislation to make sure that those, and I'm grateful to hear that Rec and Parks staff are helping clean, you know, parking lots for other county facilities, but I kind of feel like the public should have first dibs, unless, I mean, of course, there's lots of, that gets very complicated. We want to make sure our, you know, first responders can park their cars that they're... Anyway, okay, I'm going down a rabbit hole, I'll stop.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, based on Ms. Fiedler's comments, we are, we are adding shared-use paths along, which are wider and of an asphalt quality, on some routes to schools, so are, am I, those aren't plowable, is that what I'm hearing? Even after this, even after this contract, are they not made for, that's going to be a problem.
Alex Bakie, Deputy Director, Bureau of Highways. Again, aside from this legislation, which is truly focused on sidewalks, Department of Public Works is also looking at shared-use paths that are running along the roadway, that fall within the public road right-of-way, we call those side paths, or the... I'm sorry?
Not trails.
Not trails, right.
Not trails.
So, that would be a responsibility the Department of Public Works would take on, aside from Recs and Parks that's handling the larger county trail network of named trails. So, we are positioning ourselves to service those pathways. I can't speak to those that might be off the road that schools are utilizing for students to utilize, but we are targeting at least those that are running along the roadway. Hope that answers the question.
It does, thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I just would like to ultimately, eventually, at some point in our future, break down that distinction, because they're all paths that can be used to get someplace, and if people are using them, we want them to be accessible, so.
All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Five.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Just to briefly say, there is something to be said about symbolism, we should ultimately be in a position where we, you know, expect what we inspect, and so I hope someday we can come up with a plan to hold ourselves to that same standard, but simple practicality, I will vote no on this amendment.
I'm sorry, you said nay. Ms. Pickard. Aye. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
I have a hard time voting for something our Office of Law just told us was illegal, so I think I may be in the same camp as Mr. Smith in spirit. I believe, you know, this is the right thing to do, but I'm going to vote nay.
And Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
We have four, and the affirmative, three, and the negative, Amendment Number Five has been adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Six.
Amendment Number Six, this amendment removes the provisions that passes on the expense of snow and ice removal to the property owner.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The summary does just that. Move the amendment forward.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? Ms. Fiedler?
Yes, thank you. So, if I recall correctly from our previous discussion on this bill, under the Police Department, there have been no fines to the county's knowledge in the last several snowstorms or years, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, it is fair to say, even though we have had 150, I think, complaints last year, and a number of the year before, and so on and so forth, the vast majority of people are either not complaining, or the vast majority of residents and commercial business owners are shoveling the sidewalks that are adjacent to their properties. Okay. Do we know of any jurisdictions in the state that do remove sidewalks, snow, for all of the county sidewalks, and what that cost is for that county? Is that any county that offers that removal?
Alex Bakie, Deputy Director, Bureau of Highways. I'm not aware of a municipality in this region that does that. Our review of codes in our adjacent municipalities all delegate the responsibility to the abutting property owner, or business, or some other entity other than the local government.
Okay, perfect. That's, in my very short review of a few of the other counties, I didn't see that anywhere. So, the thought process behind this amendment is, okay, you give a warning, you give 24 hours, but if the county has to go clear the sidewalks, snow, for someone who hasn't removed it, just clear it, and don't put it on the taxpayer, because the vast majority of taxpayers are already helping and saving the county money clearing snow on the county's sidewalk. So, I see this bill as penalizing the people that are not helping the county save money. And that's the impetus for the amendment.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. So, I appreciate what the sponsor is saying. I think our concern with this is that the county would end up absorbing the cost for snow removal on these properties, and especially for commercial properties that have extensive road frontage, and, you know, maybe a couple hundred feet of sidewalk, that can end up adding up. And we'd have, I assume we would have to amend a contract of some sort to have them on-call to go out to non-county-owned properties to remove it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
But we've never actually followed the process that's already in code to know if those businesses would take action if they were given one, two warnings, and then a $10 fine. If we've never actually implemented the process that we already have, how do we know that folks are just going to ignore the warnings? I think that the concern about the amendment is that it takes out the responsibility of paying for the snow removal on the sidewalks to the homeowner of the property, puts it all on the county. So, right now, if we get a complaint that someone hasn't removed the snow from their sidewalk, we don't do anything. But now, with this legislation, we would have to come out and remove the snow. So, now what we're creating is a situation where, "I don't feel like doing my snow today, I'm going to call them on, you know, myself, I mean, even, and have the county come out to remove the snow." I think we want to have some sort of deterrent, well, I mean, let me say this, an incentive for the resident and the property owners, commercial or residential, to remove their own snow. That's our first goal and priority with this bill. If they don't, then after repeated attempts to try to get them to do it, then the county would remove the snow and bill them for that cost. Completely understand that, Madam Chair. I completely understand that, but we aren't even doing what we have as a mechanism right now with a $10 fee. So, I'm not taking out the notice, I'm not taking out the second notice with a penalty, I'm just saying if it continues, and the county does have to go out and remove the snow, we're not going to charge it back to the property owner, whether it be commercial or residential, because we haven't even tested the notifications to see if those work yet. So, it's more chipping away at it to see, how much do we really need to do to incentivize folks to remove the snow from their sidewalk without going too far, in my opinion. So, I mean, it does say in the, currently in the code, it does say the county will charge for, if the public, if Public Works removes the snow, the county will charge the homeowner. It's already in the code. I stand by removing it. Yeah. I think where we differentiate between putting a lien on someone's house for neglect of their own property, that is one thing, to some of the testimony that we heard tonight. But this is putting a lien on someone's home for them not helping the county save money by shoveling the county sidewalks. No. It says if the county, if it gets to the point on, let's say, day four or five, and the county goes out, and they remove the snow, there will be a tax lien for the cost of that snow removal to the property owner.
But the tax lien is not put on immediately. You're given a bill, you have an opportunity to pay that cost before a lien is put on your home. That's not, you don't get the notice and the lien is put on that day. There is a, there is a time there to have that.
Still the same cost.
Ms. Rodvian.
I just feel like we're losing sight of the focus here, is that we're not just having property owners clear the sidewalk for the sake of themselves, this is because sidewalks are used by the greater public. And the whole reason that we started this conversation was because we had a number of situations around the county where mainly young people, mainly student-age folks, but we had some older folks with disabilities, and, you know, I, you know, we've got just a message saying, "Oh, well, folks will stay home." Well, not everyone can stay home, so people do need to have access to safes, you know, safe paths to work. And if we're not holding people accountable, then we're basically allowing property owners to just endanger their neighbors. So, at what point do we, you know, we have to wait until, you know, I mean, someone gets in a horrible accident? You know, again, I'm just going to go back to, I think the perfect example is Forest Drive. Maybe what we should do here is focus on, you know, streets that have the most, you know, danger involved if the sidewalks are not plowed, but the whole point here is making sure that we're providing safe routes for pedestrians, and there are lots of pedestrians, folks that have no car, that is the way they travel, they use the sidewalks to get to the bus stop, they get to the bus stop. And so, we, I feel like we've got a, that's the focus of this bill, is making sure those folks have safe paths. And it's not really about the homeowners, you know, and taking care of their own property, it's about making sure that folks who use sidewalks have a safe sidewalk. And I feel like if the county's going to do it, they absolutely should. I mean, if this is our system, if we had a system where the county were responsible for all the sidewalks, all of the places, and no one were ever charged, that would be one thing, but we're not at the point where we could remotely begin to do that. So, right now, and I think maybe, again, if we're really going to, you know, have some equity between pedestrians and car drivers, we actually probably should be going that direction, because we plow the roads unless it's a private, you know, except for someone's private driveway, but we're not plowing the sidewalks. So, why are we giving, we're sort of giving preferential treatment to car drivers. They get their paths cleared, but walkers don't. So, ultimately, I feel... cleared, but walkers don't. So ultimately, I feel like if we're going to do it, we should do it for everyone. But in the meantime, this is a system we have. It's an easement on your house, and you, it's your responsibility to take care of it. And if you're not taking care of it, you should, you know, you should, it's not unreasonable to ask someone to pay when the county has done it for you.
Are there any other comments on this one? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number six. So what number are we on?
Number six.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith? Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien?
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment number six has been adopted.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number seven.
Amendment number seven, this amendment modifies the penalty for violation of the Code section.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we had a pretty robust discussion at the last council meeting about the level of fines, and there was some confusion. So this clarifies it. It basically says that for a residential property, the department may issue a fine of up to $50, and for any other property, a fine of up to $125. It strikes the language saying that every day is a separate violation.
May I have a motion to adopt?
Rodbien, so moved.
Have a second? Okay. Discussion, Mr. Volkey?
So just to be clear, this keeps a $50 fine for residential, but it makes it $125 for a commercial or any other non-residential property. Is that right?
Correct, which is how the bill was written initially, but it was classified as the misdemeanor.
And what is the basis for charging residential property versus commercial property different rates? Is there anticipated that there's a bigger sidewalk for a commercial? Is that you think the residential is smaller? Is it that you want to find residences less because businesses have deep pockets and they can pay more? What's the justification?
It's Karen Henry, Director, Department of Public Works. Generally, the commercial is larger sidewalks.
And I would say, too, that generally, commercial is going to have more traffic on it than a residential. So you want it to be clear and safe for the people walking in.
Some of those business parks that are out, like, in the middle of nowhere that have sidewalks, probably don't have a lot of traffic. But there are residential streets that are, I mean thoroughfares, that have a lot more traffic. I, okay.
So, all right. Is there any other discussion on this amendment?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry. Just for clarification, this is capping the amount that could be fined to a residential or a business, whereas the way that the bill was drafted, it accumulates.
Sure. Well, it's, so the way the bill is drafted, so there were two things of the way the bill is drafted that this amendment fixes. One is that each day is a separate violation. There's also a provision in the county code where it talks about the different levels of fines, whereas what, talks about what constitutes a second or subsequent fine, and that has a requirement. You can't, you can't, it can't be a second fine until the first fine is either paid or adjudicated, right? Someone might contest the fine. And so if there, that's when you get the second fine. So that would be several weeks, if not months later, because the adjudication would have to go through court. But this is just saying $50 or $125 flat.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number seven.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number seven has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number eight.
Amendment number eight, this amendment requires street sidewalks and pathways owned by government entities to be cleared of snow and ice before enforcement begins.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment?
Thank you. This one has teeth, and it's not illegal, and it's not unenforceable. And I would move the amendment. Thank you.
Second.
So, um, so, Mr. Volkey, so you're saying that this is, no enforcement can be done on any residential or commercial property until the county has cleared all of its pathways first. So basically, you're negating this entire bill?
No, just like what we're doing with leaf blowers, with the electric leaf blowers, where we are setting the example and leading the charge, and showing the private sector what government can do when we take the reins and go forward. This is another example where we are going to be the leaders in this fight, and we are going to show people what the path forward looks like.
That's right. And so, so all of my neighbors cannot file their, shovel their walks, because the cul-de-sac in front of me does not get cleared until toward the end of a snowstorm. And so the kids will all have to walk to the bus stop on the icy snows, and there's nothing we can do about it, because we haven't been able to get to every cul-de-sac in the county. That's what you're telling me?
Are they walking on icy sidewalks owned by the county?
Well, they're the ones informed of residential homes, so there'd be the sidewalks that would be there, right?
Right, right.
And you're saying that wouldn't be enforced until the county had cleared?
Right, until the county's taken care of their business. So as soon as the county sets the example for everybody, showing that they've gotten all their stuff cleared, everybody else is under the same mandate, you better have your stuff done, too.
Right. So, yes, I think this is ridiculous, but thank you, Mr. Volkey. Any other comments? Ms. Rodbien?
I really do not like the comparison to the leaf blower bill, because we have ascertained that that actually is possible within the budget that we have, and over the time period that we have created, where I think what we know here is that this is a very difficult challenge for the county. That doesn't mean that we should just let everyone off the hook because the county can't do it. The county's charge here is much, much, much greater than any other individual property owner could possibly imagine. I will take, well, I actually don't have a sidewalk in front of my house, so this doesn't, and I live in the city of Annapolis, so this doesn't apply to me personally, but it does apply to half of my constituents, you know, any of whom who do have sidewalks. But we're talking maybe 30, you know, depending, I don't know, it could be 60 feet, 90 feet. We're talking thousands of miles when we're talking about the county, so they're not comparable. The county's, you know, going to do the best we can. It's up to us to fund it. If we, you know, if we want the, I mean, sure, if we put up enough money, the county can do whatever, you know, the county will do whatever we fund. You know, if we fund enough plowing services, and, you know, we could make it so that they get everything done in a certain period of time, if we put enough money. But do we want to just say, oh, well, we can't, you know, the heck with it, we're not going to worry about the safety anymore, because we're not going to extremes in terms of how much we're going to fund the county, or how much we're going to expect the county to do, who has an unbelievably larger responsibility? So, yeah, I go with Ms. Hummer. This is ridiculous.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms.?
So I also think this amendment doesn't make sense. But this is the second time tonight, I want to make it clear, the county council cannot add money to the county budget, except for the Department of Education. And when we do that, it comes from somewhere else in the budget. We do not get to add to any other department's budget, or council, county contracts, or anything like, the county council does not have that fiscal authority.
Mr. Volkey?
I just want to lead by example. That's all.
And I want to say again, for the record, that Mr. Volkey has no sidewalks in front of his house. So just wanted to make sure everybody knows that.
I'm not disputing that. I agree.
No, you're not. I'm just saying that for those of us who live in neighborhoods with lots of sidewalks, this hits differently when it comes in the wintertime and when it comes to safety. So, so, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number eight.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien?
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number eight has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please call, please read amendment number nine.
Amendment number nine, this amendment gives the Department of Inspections and Permits the discretion to waive any fine.
Ms. Rodbien, this is your amendment?
This is my new and improved amendment.
Yes.
So I moved the amendment. We've already talked about it. I haven't talked it too much.
Second, all right. Any discussion? Mr. Smith, is yours just stolen from, okay. Administration, do you have any comment?
We're comfortable with this amendment.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number nine.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number nine has been adopted.
Bill number 7625, as amended, will be heard on November 3, 2025. Before we move on to the next bill, I just want, the young ladies who are here from the Youth Advisory Council, y'all are getting a great civics lesson tonight, because the bill y'all want to do on is last on the agenda. So you're getting to hear everything. And I apologize for that, but I hope you're learning something about snow removal as we sit here. So.
And that you've already studied for your quarterlies.
That's right.
Don't have to.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 8225.
Bill number 8225, in ordinance concerning finance, taxation, and budget, real property taxes, 911 specialist property tax credit.
All right. We have multiple sponsors on this. Ms. Pickard?
We talked about this at the work session. This is extending the property tax credit to 10 years for our 911 operators, as is on par with our public safety and law enforcement. It's, I think there are 7-0, we have a 7-0 sponsor on this bill?
Um, I think, just about, just.
I urge my colleagues' support.
Ms. Rodbien?
Oh, okay. So, Mr. Smith?
Oh, yeah. I was just going to say, it's, you know, when you're in an institution, it is important that we, you know, we heard the word parity earlier today, that we treat like entities the same. And so these 911 operators and their system that they currently have, with other public safety officials and personnel, benefit from a similar provision. And so we're just making sure that all of those employees within the public safety, specifically in the police department with the 911 operators, that they have the same ability as their peers and counterparts within that system. And so urging my colleagues to support this bill as well.
Okay. Mr. Volkey? You're another sponsor. If you want to say anything?
I'm solid.
You're solid. Anyone else? Okay. Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Brian Schenck, our financial services manager from the Office of Finance, and Kelly Kenny, our supervising county attorney from the Office of Law. We're comfortable with this legislation. We support it. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any other discussion? We will now open the public hearing on bill number 8225. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on bill number 8225? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on bill number 8225 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 8225.
Bill number 8225, in ordinance concerning finance, taxation, and budget, real property taxes, 911 specialist property tax credit.
All right. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 8225.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 8225 has passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 7925.
Bill number 7925, in ordinance concerning construction and property maintenance codes, civil fines, international property maintenance codes, codes and supplement, air conditioning, and multiple dwellings.
All right. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Don Curtian, our Director of Environmental Health from the Health Department, Kelly Kenny, our supervising county attorney from the Office of Law. We did discuss this bill at the work session last week, but basically, it's to update the property maintenance code to require owners of multiple-dwelling residential properties that do provide air conditioning to tenants, to maintain the air conditioning to certain standards, and also requires alternative cooling relief be provided when directed by the Department of Health, and allows for the Department of Health to provide alternative cooling relief when an owner fails to do so, and assess those costs and fines to the property owner. So this bill, again, came about as a result of multiple complaints over one in particular property that has been problematic over the last couple of years, in not providing cooling relief for their residents when the air conditioning went out for multiple days during the hottest time of the year. So this legislation is modeled on what some surrounding jurisdictions have. So we're happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any discussion? Okay, we will now open the public hearing on bill number 7925. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece of testimony that was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on bill number 7925? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on bill number 7925 is now closed. Oh, sorry. I thought you were pointing at Mr. Svensson.
Maryland, I just stumbled into this legislation this afternoon. As I was preparing to see, I was looking back on the work session to see what the discussion was on the snow removal, and I ran into this. Is a multi-dwelling an apartment building, or a?
Yes, apartment building.
Okay, it's an apartment building. If the unit is rented without air conditioning, okay, and the rent is set up accordingly, how, I just don't understand how we're turning the county into, there should be health department regulations and things in place where leases that we're dealing with. So I apologize for not being better prepared, but this, this piece of legislation is, just seems like we're going crazy with the county, getting into snow removal business. And I guess those guys during the off-season are going to do air conditioning work. I don't know. I'm being a little facetious, and I apologize. But I would ask that this be looked at harder before being voted on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Seeing no further movement, the public hearing on bill number 7925 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 7925.
Bill number 7925, in ordinance concerning construction and property maintenance codes, civil fines, international property maintenance codes, codes and supplement, air conditioning, and multiple dwellings.
Okay. And, Mr. Higgins, I just want to clarify something. This only applies to buildings that have air conditioning. So if it is a multifamily, an apartment building that does not currently have air conditioning, it does not pertain to them. So, we have one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one, this amendment requires the department to determine whether, ooh, excuse me, sorry about that. This amendment requires the department to determine whether the owner of a multiple dwelling is making best efforts to provide alternative cooling relief before ordering the owner to provide alternative cooling relief. I also want to note on the record that it should read on page three of the proposed bill in line two, strike by through the first instance of department in line three. And so I am making that note on the record. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment comes out of our discussion at the work session. I appreciate the Department of Health going back and forth and discussing this. I've had an opportunity to share this with the administration. I don't want to speak for the administration's position, but I'm cautiously optimistic that this might be okay. We'll see. With that, I also had an opportunity to speak with the Maryland Multifamily Association, and I think that by and large, they're comfortable with this legislation. My understanding is they were not really taking a position on it, because their understanding is, for the most part, if you're a operator who is doing the right things, this legislation's not going to impact you. And if you're an operator who's not doing the right things, then you probably deserve to be, you know, sort of brought to task and have these things taken care of. The purpose with this amendment is not to exculpate, exculpate, that's the word I want, exculpate bad operators from the legislation. The purpose is to put a requirement in that the department has to make sure, look, we've gone out, we've checked, these people are not doing what we've asked them to do, we've given them the opportunity to rectify, they have not done it, so now we're going to step in and we're going to take action. So that's the purpose with this, and I would ask for my colleagues' support.
Okay. Do I have a second, or is that your motion to adopt?
Second.
All right. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I do appreciate the sponsor reaching out to us and sharing this language ahead of time. I also had the chance to speak with the folks from the Maryland Multifamily Housing Association. I appreciate their outreach and discussion on this. So I have to say, on the record, the administration supports Councilman Volkey's amendment.
On the record. This is kind of a bonus night for Mr. Volkey. Man. So I will say, too, we heard from the Maryland Multifamily Association, and they are in support of this, and realize that this is targeted just to the bad actors. For instance, in this, it says, if they've made a, making a good faith- this, it says, if they've made a, making a good faith effort, the particular complex in my area that sparked some of this, they had a situation where they were making best efforts to fix the problem, but they were not providing any cooling relief for anyone. And so that's where you run into the problem. If they had been doing both, then there wouldn't have been an issue. But the county had to step in to protect the health and safety of the residents while they were trying to get the correct parts to fix it. So this really is for, for folks who are not doing what they're supposed to do. So I do support this, because I think that we do have, I think most people want to fix their conditioning in the middle of the summer and want to do the right thing. But we need to have an incentive for those who are not. So I, I am going to support your amendment, Mr. Volkey. So, is there any other? Ms. Rabin?
So my, I guess, one remaining question is, you've got, you know, apartment building owner who has indeed done everything they possibly can to, you know, fix the, you know, the HVAC system in whatever way it needs to be, but, you know, they've got, the, the part they need is on back order for, you know, a week. And so you're, you've got residents that are just unbearably hot. Why would, why is, are we comfortable with the county absorbing the cost of providing the alternate cooling? Because that's not, that is a cost. I mean, there is a cost to that. And why would the county bear that cost and not the property owner, even though they're, you know, they're making their best attempts?
No, this, this bill, this amendment, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Volkey, is saying that they, they will, while waiting for that part, they have to be making the efforts to provide other cooling relief. And if, it's only if they don't provide the best efforts to provide other cooling relief that they would, that the county would step in. So for instance, if the park broke down and they're waiting for a week for that, but in the meantime, they provide fans and cooling stations and all of those things, then they're making their best efforts. But if they don't provide anything alternative, that's when the county would step in.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So to clarify, if the county does have to step in, the cost would be on the property owner, correct?
I think, so let me clarify two things, right? One, I think we're talking about the fine, and then we're also talking about the extent to which the county steps in and incurs costs. And I think those are two pieces of this. You and I, just for the benefit of everybody, you had asked me this question earlier, and my response, I think, was something along the lines of, you know, they would have to bear that cost, meaning the county would bear it. I don't think that's the correct answer. I actually think the correct answer, and Mr. Hunt, jump in, Mr. Curtin, tell me. I think the right answer to your question is what Ms. Hummer just said. You wouldn't be able to fine them if you found they were using best efforts, but you could still go in and make them do alternative cooling, and that cost would be borne by the property owner. Is that your understanding too?
Correct. And, and if they did not, and the county had to provide those services, then the county could charge.
You could charge back, right. But you couldn't fine them for their failure to, to provide that, or to state that they're, like, doing the wrong thing, unless you find that they're not making best efforts.
Correct.
Okay. That's what I thought it was.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yep. And that gets my support. So thank you.
Thank you.
There we go. All right. Any other discussion on this one? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number one.
Ms. Ledbetter? Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rabin?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one has been adopted.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 2925.
Resolution number 2925, resolution requesting the Department of Inspections and Permits to develop a forest conservation manual to serve as a guidebook for property owners and homeowners associations who maintain forest conservation easements on their properties.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This resolution came out of the discussion on the previous bill, to just have a guidebook reference for constituents who may have a property that's in the critical area, or have a forest conservation easement on their property. I do want to clarify that what I am envisioning is not a 100-plus-page manual. It is a very easy to comprehend. If you have a property that is this, and then you do that. I don't envision that we should need to contract out the creation of this. I could be wrong. I'm happy to help. I know how to do a PowerPoint. Really, it's just a matter of taking the code and applying it to real-life situations so that residents know what to do with what they have when it comes to these areas.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have Ragupadaami, our Assistant Director from Inspections and Permits, and Nathan Markline as well. So I appreciate those comments, because I think there was some heartburn, perhaps, over having to create a whole manual and the work that would entail. But I know that the department is already working on some sort of guidance documents, so I'm not sure if they want to add anything additional.
Ragupadaami, Assistant Director of Inspections and Permits, we discussed the resolution at the work session. The department will be working on several pieces of information, including a fact sheet, some type of an owner's maintenance guide. In addition to that, we will be putting together some frequently asked questions on the county website. We are already working towards that right now. Thank you.
I appreciate, Madam Chair, I appreciate that. If you want to throw the word "manual" on any of those, that would be great. This resolutions, as you know, are non-binding. I think my intent is just to, when the council votes on this resolution, have an opinion and a statement on what we think the county should be providing to homeowners and homeowners associations, so that they don't accidentally, when they had the best of intentions of following the rules, accidentally run afoul. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other discussion on this? Mr. Volkey?
Ms. Ledbetter?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Ledbetter?
Just to be clear, we don't want you to spend anywhere close to the $250,000 that you noted in the fiscal note that this might cost. I think when Ms. Fiedler envisioned this, it was like one one-hundredth of that, maybe. So we're looking for basic, just something that people can reference.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We will now open the public hearing on Resolution number 2925. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece, which was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Resolution number 2925? Okay. We do have a couple people, so please come up to the table and have a seat. When is your turn? State your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Yes, sir?
Good evening, council members. I'm Steve Miller. I live at 613 Samantha Court, Annapolis, Maryland. It was great to see that there was bipartisan sponsorship of this particular resolution, and a forest conservation manual has been needed for some time. I will take some exception. When the Bill 6819 was adopted on forest conservation, there was a lot in that package, and we had some very stringent requirements. And what followed also were a number of green notices that helped to amplify information in that bill. It's, it really would have been a natural process to create a manual at that time, very much like the Stormwater Management Processes and Procedures Manual, or the Landscape Manual, because it, it is just something that needs to institutionalize, some stuff that's just on the website. But to Councilwoman Fiedler's point, the most immediate thing right now is to simplify a lot of the information that you found difficult to understand during council sessions and, and work sessions. I just think that it's going to take more than IMP to bring this together. There's tree maintenance that's in DPW. DNR owns some of that for street road, for public road trees. IMP has trees in best management practices. And then we've talked already about trees and forest conservation easements in the critical area. This needs to be simplified, and it will take a group effort to make that happen. But thank you for what you've done for people that care about maintaining and preserving trees here within our county.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Ms. Minahan? Mr. Minahan?
Matt Minahan, on behalf of the Growth Action Network. GAN supports this resolution wholeheartedly, and is deeply appreciative of the sponsor taking the initiative on this. It's a much-needed manual to provide in plain English in one place, everything, one accessible document, the requirements of the county code, as well as information that is presently in copyrighted, copyrighted documents that may be found on other websites. So we would add information about the management of forests and the canopy, vegetation management, habitat enhancement plans, and information about the road trees and the DNR tree permits, and what tree care removal services the county provides. It would also have the same status as the Landscape Manual. Finally, it would be a huge help to homeowners and HOAs in managing their forests, street trees, and stormwater BMPs in the appropriate manner. So please pass this resolution. Thanks to Steve. Thanks to the sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minahan. All right. The public hearing on Resolution number 2925 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 2925.
Resolution number 2925, resolution requesting the Department of Inspections and Permits to develop a forest conservation manual to serve as a guidebook for property owners and homeowners associations who maintain forest conservation easements on their properties.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution number 2925.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rabin?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 2925 has been adopted.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 8125.
Bill number 8125, in ordinance concerning subdivision and development, adequate public facilities, adequate transportation facilities, mitigation, fees and securities, development impact fee credits.
All right. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Joining me at the table, I have Greg Swain, our county attorney, Sarah Fowler, our planning administration, planning administrator for transportation development from the Office of Planning and Zoning, David Braun, our engineering administrator from the Department of Public Works, and Brian Ulrich, our planning administrator from the Office of Transportation. So we had a very robust discussion about this bill at the work session on Tuesday, and we have heard that feedback from all the council members. We have taken it back. Since that work session, we've had some productive meetings with stakeholders. We are continuing to evaluate ways to improve this bill and potential amendments for this bill. So at the appropriate time, we will ask for this bill to be held while we continue to have those discussions. And as always, we are happy to talk to any council members, answer any questions that folks have in the meantime. But I don't want to prolong the hearing any longer. I know there are folks who've been waiting a while to testify, but we are happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any discussion before we go to public hearing? Okay. We will now open the public hearing on Bill number 8125. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece, which was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When is your turn? State your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Lucy Davis and John Corin. And if there's anyone else who would like to speak on this bill, you may come up at this time as well. And we appreciate you all for staying. Y'all got last on the agenda, so you got the later night. So, Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, council. I'm here on behalf of the Youth Advisory Council. I'm our current chair. And when we sat down to talk about Bill 8125, we unanimously agreed that this was something we wanted to put our foot in the door about. We think this is very, very important. As young residents and students of Anarundel County, we see every day how transportation affects our lives and the lives of the people around us. From students walking or biking to school without sidewalks, to working teens commuting to jobs without reliable transit options, to elderly and disabled residents struggling to figure out commuting safely. Our current infrastructure often falls very short of meeting the needs of everybody in our community. Bill 8125 represents an important step forward in fixing that. It ensures that as our county grows, new development projects will not only consider road capacity for cars, but also prioritize safe, accessible, and truly, truly key infrastructure, including sidewalks, bike lanes, and public transportation. This will allow residents, regardless of age, ability, accessibility to a vehicle, and the ability to travel safely, to and from school, to work, to jobs. Now, I want you guys all to think back to when you guys were our age. I don't know how long ago that was, but I'm sure you guys can remember. We...
Watch it, Volkey.
Getting around places is very subjective. I think most people don't have cars, license. Being able to walk on roads that are unsafe, we've had two incidents where at one elderly individual and a younger student have been hit by cars. This is, this is not something that we're just, like, thinking about, talking about. This is very real, and I would really love for you guys to be in support of this bill as the Youth Advisory Council is as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, could you give your name and address for the record?
Yeah, I apologize. My name's Lucy Davis, and my address is 108 Willshire Lane, Severna Park, Maryland.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. You may go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And good evening, council. My name is Campbell Goodburn, 14 Tucker Street, Annapolis, Maryland, and I am secretary on the Anarundel Youth Advisory Council. I'm here with the Anarundel Youth Advisory Council in support of APF Bill 8125. With the passing of APF Bill 8125, we can extend opportunities to residents who experience difficulties with mobility and create a more inclusive environment. This bill will also allow residents without personal vehicles to travel more quickly and efficiently. This bill could allow residents to make more eco-conscious decisions, such as choosing to walk to their destination over using their personal vehicle. Thank you all for considering putting Bill 8125 into motion to create more accessible, more accessible and inclusive county for all residents.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, members of council. My name is Madison Watson. My address is 1800 Hillburn Way, Crofton, Maryland. And I'm a member of the Youth Advisory Council, speaking in support of Bill 8125. As young residents and students, we see firsthand how transportation affects our daily lives. Transportation affects how students walk to school, how teens get to work, and how families connect within their communities. As members of Youth Advisory Council, we do not only represent our fellow youth, but everyone in the community. Many elderly and disabled residents face the same challenges with commuting. Without safe sidewalks, crosswalks, and accessible transit, simple tasks like getting to a doctor's appointment or grocery store can become unsafe or impossible. With some neighborhoods and communities are, while some neighborhoods or communities are walking distance from stores and town centers, such neighborhoods are limited. Therefore, emphasizing the importance of considering other ways to travel besides cars will best include all members of our community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Corin?
I'm on. Okay, great, thank you. First of all, I'm glad to know our future's in good hands with students like this. John Corin, 125 Severna Park, Hillcrest Lane, Severna Park, Maryland. Bike AAA, and also I chair the Anarundel County Bicycle Advisory Commission, which would love to meet with the Youth Commission, as we have in past years, and also a member of the Anarundel County Transportation Commission. I've been on this work group since it launched five-plus years ago. I think I have as good an attendance record as anyone on the group. We've got to support the goals of this bill, which are to achieve our multimodal mode share, which the council has already unanimously approved in Move Anarundel and Walk and Roll Anarundel, and also to add safety to the current APF, which is only focused on congestion. The current APF cares nothing about safety, only congestion. This bill can do that. The goals are right, but there are some, some improvements that need to be made to the bill. There are improvements that would simplify the bill, that would strengthen the bill, and that I also think would provide clarity to developers who will have to live with the bill. We have provided some recommendations to the administration. I just want to say that I am here to stay with it. I've got five years invested. I don't want more years, I want months. But I'm here to work with the council and the administration to get the bill right and get the bill passed, and to do that soon. So there are amendments. I'm happy to work with them. And let's get this done in months, not years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corin. Mr. Minahan?
Matt Minahan, 3651 First Avenue, Edgewater, Maryland. On behalf of the Growth Action Network, GAN is pleased to... On behalf of the Growth Action Network, GAN is pleased to finally be reviewing this legislation that includes multiple modes of transportation to replace the current roads APF code. As John said, the goals and objectives of the bill are just right. There's no way to resolve in this one bill the competing needs of transportation and infrastructure and development all in one place, but this bill is a step in the right direction. And there's much to like about the bill. In addition to the multiple modes of transportation, it includes tailored approaches to evaluating each modality based on development policy areas from Plan 2040, creates different criteria for development density, and also includes different criteria for development. However, we share some of the same concerns that you expressed at the work session on April 14. The bill's a complex bill, and you've got a short timeframe to comprehend all of it. Would have been greatly reduced had the bill been reviewed by an independent citizen-led planning commission, which would have explored this with experts and citizen testimony and explored the complicated elements of this bill and presented you with a preliminary report on ways to approach this. So we look forward to further discussion of the bill in the coming weeks as it's revised to incorporate community and council input. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Svensson.
Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. I have several concerns with this bill, and I've highlighted seven specific concerns in my written testimony. I'm not going to obviously go through all of those. I guess just clearly, strengthening the APF by adding new multimodal standards is laudable. But we should not weaken the traffic mitigation standards by allowing overly optimistic assumptions about reduced vehicle trips, by assuming users will shift to other modes of transportation. I know Councilmember Volkey raised this issue at the council work session, was basically, "Oh, don't worry about that. It's Section 1 and 2 will cover it." Disregard Section 4, the man behind the curtain. I'm sorry. I'm looking at Section 4, and I'm concerned about it. And this is being held. Does that give more time on the clock, or is the clock still ticking? I dare say the clock's still ticking. I think you ought to all... Don't amend this. Vote on it and defeat it, and have them come back with the bill after they've taken an appropriate approach. There is an organization that you can submit this to. Read your charter. It's called the Planning Advisory Board. They review the capital budget all the time. They've reviewed a lot of plans. They know this stuff, and they actually have hybrid public hearings when they invite the public to talk. So, I mean, imagine that. They do it. So I'm sorry, my details are in my written testimony, but this is wrong. This is not the first time we've had this happen, folks, you know? I mean, as I said earlier in this meeting, two years ago, I was able to pull out the same thing. You need to communicate. A man on this panel should not know more than any of you at this point in this stage. I'm sorry. That's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you all. So, all right. The public hearing on Bill Number 8125 is now closed. Madam Sec...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to acknowledge the students that came out this evening. I do remember being your age, and I can promise you, I didn't know what the county council was, and I certainly wasn't testifying in front of them. So, great job.
And I will add that even though Mr. Volkey pointed me out, I do remember when I was your age as well. And when I was your age, he was born.